Good evening. Welcome to the Halifax Board of Selectmen's Meeting, this date July 23rd. All selectmen present. We are being taped by Area 58. You can find it on local channels and YouTube. First thing on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance if you'll join me.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Has everybody had an opportunity to check the minutes for April 23rd and July 15th?
Yep.
Want to make presentations or do I?
Um.
Well, we're doing 23rd. Tom?
You want me to move it?
Mm-hmm.
And I move the minutes for July 23rd, 2019?
April 23rd.
Oh, April 23rd. I'm looking at the agenda. April 23rd. You're that far behind, Peter? I'm kidding. I'm kidding, I'm kidding, Peter.
I'll second those. All in favor?
Right.
Tom?
Well, I'm in the groove today. It's been my day. Go ahead.
I moved the meeting minutes of July 15th, 2019.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Come around the other side.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I affirm approval of the following warrants and commitment. FY19 vendor warrant, number 122, for $37,932.16. FY20 vendor warrant, number 5, for $999,680.5. An ambulance commitment from July 8th to July 14th, 2019, for $82,062.33.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to approve the following warrants. Payroll warrant, number 6, for $233,329.85. Vendor warrant, number 7, for $1,335,968.7. And the withholding warrant, number 8, for $79,821.43.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The bills?
Okay. I move to approve the payment of the selectmen's bills dated July 23rd, 2019. Insurance for $32,549. Selectment expense account for $225. Selectment expense for $30. 1,000, uh, sorry, selectmen's expense account, $1,059, the MMA annual dues. And, uh, selectmen's expense account, 85, uh, sorry, $58.35 to WB Mason.
Second.
Is that complete? You have a presentation? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Charlie, I guess we got a few minutes.
Okay. Good to hear. Um, we're doing a hearing. Trailer permit is later. Two cemetery deeds assigned. Passes down. So, on council on aging, um, the board met last Monday and accepted the retirement from Barbara Brenton as council on aging director. We've done, started doing the postings in the various publications and websites and such. Um, so that's happened. We are getting a few applications already. Five of them have come in as of today. On the screening committee, we had people so far who were interested from the council on aging. Originally, three members indicated an interest. I had written back to tell them that the board's intent is appoint one or two members from the council of the screening committee. So what we're have is that Adrian Grimson and Ellen Murphy from the council are interested in serving. Also, town officials, town clerk Barbara Gaynor and library director Jean Galot are interested. And also residents who vote, Mary Dravenese, Martha Smith, and J.R.S. Hayward are interested. I'm not asking the board to make any appointments tonight. The deadline for the applications is in for several more weeks. I bring all this back to the board. Three weeks from now, the next board's next regularly scheduled meeting. People who are interested in serving on the screening committee, you can just get in contact with the selectmen's office, you know, email, phone call, drop-in, however you want to do it, it's fine.
Now, we decided on the number of the committee.
Well, I'm going to recommend that you have seven at the very least, because I've given the number of people at least that were interested. I'd like to get many of them on there and get as diverse population as possible. If the board wanted to do more than seven, that's, the board's right to do so. I think at some point it gets a little cumbersome though, in terms of the number of members on the committee.
So, August, what, 16th, 15th?
16th is the deadline, and the board's meeting again on August 13th. So my recommendation would be that the board make appointments on the meeting on the 13th. And then I can start conveying the information to the screening committee, make copies of the applications. I've already said that I'm going to be available, not to serve on the committee at all, but if you need help making sure, the meeting notices and contacting applicants and things like that, we can work it through the selectmen's office without a problem.
I'm good with that.
Okay.
On the interim, the board's going to need to choose someone to act as interim director once Barbara retires, until the director's hired, which probably will not happen until, I mean, the appointment probably wouldn't happen until sometime mid-September and, you know, I, depending on how quickly that person could serve, it might be late September, early October before that. So interim is going to be there for a good month and a half at least.
Has anybody contacted you, shown any interest in doing it?
No, because I haven't done an hour ties or anything like that. I think in general, we've, in most departments, we would go if it was ever the second sort of in command, or if one of the assistants in the department was, if, uh, someone leave for whatever reason or not available, we appoint the assistant as interim because they have the most familiarity with the department. I can certainly contact the folks over at council on aging and see if there's anybody interested in serving. And if so, then I'll bring that person's name back to the board. Um, just one correction. Ellen Murphy had asked me to correct any statements I'd made that indicated that Barbara Brenton's resigning as council aging director, as Murphy wrote to say Ms. Brenton's retiring as the council on aging director.
Yep.
And we noted out the means of the screening committee, they can, if they wish to, hold the meetings in executive session, including meetings where decisions are made as to who to interview, the interviews themselves, and a decision as to which candidates recommend them to the board segment. Once the board has its interviews, those interviews are going to be in public session. Let's see, got another two more. Um, just an update on Old Dana Road and Fisheries and Wildlife. Joan Kears is going to be meeting with county commissioners on Thursday, the 8th of August to talk about the steps needed in order to transfer the two parcels. One for the money compensation we've talked about originally, and then the one that would be the trade, that triangle piece, which was much lower in value, the trade for the sliver along Old Dana Road. She did check with Natural Heritage, it has no problems in terms of endangered species issues. We're not disturbing anything or anything like that, it's simply a trade of property, so that shouldn't be an issue. She did ask for any comments from the Highway Surveyor about the proposed layout for Old Dana Road. I sent him a copy of the plans back from, I guess it's about 20 years ago, and so I'm waiting to hear back from him about those. That's where that stands. Um, I do have a meme of Grant that I'll want Troy to send, there's one more page that I missed on Troy's signing. Is it 10 after?
No, you got it about a minute.
Okay. So, if Troy could sign.
I'll give you a test when you...
Uh, right. Sorry, I'll worry about the nail. Got last X there. Would be helpful. Highway project bidding, the town received two bids, one from T.L. Edwards for $319,771.5, and the other from Agreed Industries for $10,860 for roadwork here during 2019. Highway surveyors recommending that the board award the bid to T.L. Edwards, so I think we're so move.
Is that the lowest bid?
That is the lowest bid. We received two bids, T.L. Edwards was the low bid. I'll move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And at this time, we have a meeting with the Mr. Cress.
Mr.?
And that's concerning tree pruning and removal. You want to give us a rundown of where we are and what...
Uh, just want to give a quick overview of what...
Yes, please.
Okay, so, National Grid is working this line as a new spec in accordance to vision of DPU. The old spec was six feet off the lines, 10 feet above, 15 feet below. Ground cutting underneath that, obviously keeps stuff from regrowing up underneath. Uh, the new spec, which National Grid and DPU have decided upon for the circuit which feeds East Bridgewater, Hanson, Pembroke, and parts of Halifax, is eight feet up from the lines, ground to sky, clearing all non-wire friendly species of trees underneath. So, you know, your oaks, your pumplocks, uh, hibory trees, maple trees, anything that would grow up underneath, which would then grow back up into the lines, would be removed eight feet underneath the lines, each side off of, uh, from each side of the lines. So you're looking at about, depending on construction of the line, anywhere from, you know, 18 feet to up 20, 22, depending on construction of the lines for a width. In doing so, any trees which would be negatively impacted by the trimming in such a substantial way that we feel they probably survive that trimming, we would be asking for removals for. So, some of those trees could be, you know, up to, you know, 15 feet off the lines, depending upon species, because some species just don't take well to trimming, and other ones, you know, lean over the road, you know, where we would have to take some of the portions out, we'd be asking for removals. So, we provided you a list of the initial work of probably all the town trees, which we felt would end up warranting removal or special trimming of limbs that are above eight inches in diameter in order to accommodate the story.
And these trees are within the town's right-of-way. If there was a tree...
Correct. These are specifically for tree. Anything on private property, we've notified and talked to property owners about.
And that's their permission whether or not to grant it?
Correct.
The town does not get involved in those decisions?
Correct.
That was going to be my question. I just wanted to be sure we were talking about just town layout?
Yes.
I'm one of the people...
Excuse me, excuse me for saying, excuse me. Yeah, you'll get your opportunity.
Okay.
Good, thank you. Tom?
No, no, that's all. I just, I just wanted to know which trees he's talking about at this specific moment, if we're talking about town layout stuff, that that has different impact than personal property impact.
Um, do you have any questions? I mean, we're going to get from the rest of the audience, but...
Uh, the trees originally were tagged with red markings.
Correct. Red and more blue.
Okay.
So, red markings would be trees which would be moved due to the impact, and blue would be trimmed, generally speaking, because the road right-of-way, the side of the road with the lines is fairly small. It's generally within that eight feet. Almost all the trees within the road right-of-way on that side, if they are not of a species which is wire friendly, would be removed. And then a few trees which are on the other side would probably be trimmed.
Can I ask the Highway Surveyor, because he's here? Are you comfortable with the trees that are marked, the ones that are in the town layout, that that is where the town layout is? Okay.
You had, you had a statement there.
I agree that the...
Your name, your name and where do you live, please?
I'm Leslie Hawkins. I live at 182 Elm Street. This is my husband, Herb, and I've lived in this town for almost 38 years. And I've done everything I can to take care of these trees, and it acts as a buffer for all the traffic and all the noise. I have pictures with me tonight that will show you the damage that these trucks do to the inside of my house. And if you take the trees down, which have, some of them have to be trimmed, and I've already spoken with this gentleman, on the trees that we're going to take, I want to know who's going to do some restitution or take care of my taxes that I'm paying, because it's going to destroy the whole front of my property. Will there be somebody who will come and plant a shrub that will take care of it and get in the noise like the trees did? Or is it just something that's going to be stuck to the taxpayers again?
That's the first time I've asked that question.
Yeah, I'm not prepared to answer that.
Okay.
Mr. Harper, I went through the list, and I might be missing something, but I didn't see anything on the list in front of 182.
All of their trees would be back set behind their stone wall for them. I think there is only one small tree, any tree under age in diameter isn't on the list.
Oh, okay.
That's considered brush for National Grid's purposes for the spec. And the only thing which, in front of their house is like one elm tree, if I remember correctly, by the pole. And the elm tree is only about that big around, if I remember correctly, off the top. It's been a while since I've been there, but I think it was only about three or four inch diameter elm tree, directly underneath the pole, right next to the road. And that would be the only tree along the edge of their property, which would be town property as opposed to private.
The dilemma, as I see it for us, is understanding your concern and not diminishing it or anything like that. Our responsibility lies to try to make sure that everybody maintains their power for as long as they possibly can. Not our responsibility, but our end of this, if you will, in terms of allowing permission to cut trees on town property. So, that becomes a difficult issue now. If, if in fact, one of those trees were to impact the power lines, we're talking about a primary line, a lot of people get affected with that. So I, this is kind of a dilemma, as I see it.
And this spec, this is only for main line. It is not for secondary lines or for a single-phase primary. It is only for the three-phase main line. They're not extending that any further down the line than that.
Okay.
Well, I have spoken to this gentleman about it, and I do agree that some of the trees have grown up over the wires and should be taken care of, and if they're taken down, my question is still, what do I, do I have the responsibility to replace these, to take, you know, maintain my privacy? Or is it something that National Grid will do? Not necessarily the town.
Unfortunately, this time, we're laying out the money to remove all the trees.
Excuse me, excuse me, you want to direct it this way?
Okay. As of now, National Grid, we do not have a tree replanting program. I'm Rob Ritter, by the way. I'm sorry, Rob Ritter, ACRT, I'm a contractor versus National Grid. At this time, we do not have a tree replacement program in place. We are viewing it as we are laying out the money to mitigate any hazards from line to maintain reliability. As far as any replanting on private properties or town properties, that would be the responsibility of the town or the homeowner, depending. If it's town property, the town wants to put something back for screening, the town would have to pay for that. If the homeowner deems that okay, they, if the homeowner is in agreement, if she's saying that, I don't remember the property I've had, but if she has given us permission to remove the trees and she's okay with us removing the trees, it would, yes, it would be up to her to grab the stump and put something back in place and screen.
So, at this point in time, let me get this straight, if I heard it correctly. There's only one tree that's on town property that may be cut down?
Uh, in front of her property, correct. The rest of the trees, the rest of the trees on their property are in private. So to set that...
So, so you don't have permission to cut?
You don't have permission to cut those down?
I gave them permission to cut the trees.
Oh, you did? Okay.
Because it's a, after what we saw down on the Cape and all of that, you don't want to, you know...
When you say cut the trees, you mean prune them?
No, I mean, they contain some of these down because of the species, yeah, ground level, because these are the species that he was talking about. I think it's a cherry tree and some sort of a maple that's very quickly, you know, grows very quickly.
Well, as to who would be responsible for that, I really don't have an answer for you right now. And I, and I would be speaking out of turn if I did make any statements to it, but...
Well, I mean, if it was just something, even in the, in the respect that it's going to take like the value of my house down, because I'm so close to the road, it's a non-controlling lot as it is. And, you know, it's one of the ones that were built in the 60s. And so we're closer to the road than what they mandate today. So, obviously, if I have a barrier so that I don't have to see this traffic, I don't have to see the, the tour buses from Houston going by my house, which I do, you know, and they're not going there, they own at 12 o'clock at night. So, you know, I really, and I respectfully ask you, Mrs. Slethman, who have charged with, or, you know, in charge of the police department, to mention it to them politely and ask them to do something and try to stop one of the trucks or buses that are going 70 and 80 miles an hour to my house.
Have you, just one question. Have you, have you talked to the police chief concerning this matter?
I've talked to several of the police, but as I see them, you know...
No, 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 no. Did you talk to the police chief concerning this?
No, I did not.
He's very responsive to that kind of stuff.
Okay, well, I can, you know...
If you would be so kind, we'll mention it to him, but if you'd be so kind to talk to him, because that gives him an opportunity to correct the situation if they're not doing it, if they've already spoke to him.
You understand our dilemma.
I know, because you don't have the power to say what they're going to do on taxes in the first place.
Yeah, and, and, you know, if it's, if it's a potential problem for everybody's power downstream from there, you know, now it's difficult to say, no, leave this, leave that, leave that, and then the first storm that affects anybody's power, it's, hey, you know, how come?
Exactly, which is why I gave provision to take the trees. I even said one more pot, pot of that big cherry tree, you could take that too. So, I don't want to be responsible for putting out anybody's...
Sure. Well, we appreciate that, but...
Neither do I, and that's our problem, too.
Exactly.
Charlie?
I guess it sounds like, you know, some of the vegetations on your property, which would be your responsibility, obviously, if you wanted to put new bushes or anything like that, it's not, we're not going to grow into hazards to the wiring. That would be a possibility of screening between you and the house. As far as the town's right-of-way, what I would do is work with Steve Hayward about the possibility. We do have a tree budget every year. It's not big. We don't, it's not like we can plant hundreds of trees every year, but I would talk with him and maybe with the two of you about what species might be replanted in the town right-of-way that aren't going to grow into hazards for the wires at some future date.
That could help you out.
And National Grid is actually redoing their list of wire-friendly trees. We do have a list at the moment, but it is severely out of date as to what our local nurseries actually are carrying at the moment. So National Grid has been calling around the local nurseries to update the list. When it's complete, I believe, I'm going to talk to him about dropping off a copy of the list to him once National Grid has concluded their, their research into it.
So, I guess what he's saying is if you happen to pick a species of tree and that's the one you want, call up for availability before you put it in stock.
Okay. Is there any further information that you need to give us at this time on what your project's going to be?
Well, I think there are some more.
We'll just answer questions as they come up.
All right. Peter?
Uh, Peter Beal's 28 Elm Street. Probably my comments are similar to what you're in, in a way, and that is, I understand that we all need power, and we don't want to be responsible for somebody being out of power, and that's a very high priority, certainly for the town and even us as citizens. What I find troublesome, to use a nice word about it, is, I don't know if you could say it's unconstitutional, but it's certainly un-American, that somebody can walk in and up to me and say, "We need to take down these two trees that give you the only shade you have in your yard, and we can only take them to the ground, and it's up to you now. It's going to cost you money to finish the job, number one. And number two, we have no money to replace them." To me, that just seems, the laws of eminent, or eminent domain, I don't understand how they work, I don't know what all that is, but there's at least a theory in the law that says if you're going to do me harm, you have to give me fair market value to at least, I guess the, maybe the better way to put it is you're not supposed to do me harm. If there's something that just can't be reversed, like, we all want power and my trees might take down the line, and we don't want to, you know, be responsible for three times loss of power, I get it. But don't cost me, you know, if this is a mandate from the state saying this is what has to be done, it shouldn't end up costing me additional money in addition to losing the, the enjoyment of my property.
Just to be clear, Peter, are these trees that you're referring to on your property or on the layout?
Mine have, what's a red tag?
One of these trees is on town property, if I remember correctly. There's another within the town layout, and then there's a small spruce tree that they planted, which actually might be on town property.
No, I don't care, but there's two, there's two maple trees that, frankly, my lawn will, it's not, it's a shady one, it's not going to be a live one, you know, when they're done. I'm not, I'm not expecting you to solve all my problems, and I'm not trying to be unconscious or unconscientious of the need and the fact that there's a problem here that the town's going to address. I'm just saying, it seems to me that this shouldn't end up, in addition to losing what I'm going to lose in the process, which is quite a lot to the enjoyment of my property, it shouldn't also cost me money. I shouldn't have to be the guy out there renting a stump grinder and getting rid of the stumps after all of that. And frankly, I'd rather they were replaced. I don't know who, you know, who's going to do that, but it wasn't my idea to take them down.
So, the way National Grid runs that is that, A, we don't own trees, they are a lunch company, they own the wires, they own electricity running through the wires. Basically, the way they look at it is they are paying for tree work on trees that they don't own. They were more than happy to take on that cost in order to keep their power running through the lines and keep the community up and running. They, however, do not, as they see it, feel the need to incur the cost of the stump removal as well as the cost of trimming trees and stuff for trees that ought to be maintained by the homeowners. And that's pretty much their position on that, basically the 12 years that I've been contracted for them.
And that's in writing?
Uh, that has been National Grid's policy ever since I've worked for them, I've worked with them for 12 years.
Can we get a copy of that?
Uh, I can ask.
We could ask, more likely, if you go to National Grid's tree trimming website, there'll be things all over, even on all the paperwork that we presented with everybody, states right on there that we don't plant the stumps.
Yeah, could we have a copy of that?
I can inquire about it, I don't know how quick I'll be able to get it. It would have to go through...
Would, would any of the permission forms that we have homeowners sign up on that state right on them stump grinding, or that they do not be stump grinding, would that be sufficient for what you want? Just something stated?
No, I'd like to see the file, see.
Okay. You might be able to get that faster instead of going through us, going through the Creeds' Public Advocate that you guys usually are in contact to. I can't remember the gentleman's name because I work in so many different areas, but each area generally has some people that we've talked to for public relations and stuff. They would have access to that paperwork far quicker than I would, obviously. So he might be the better choice in trying to be a hold of that. But that's pretty much been their, their public opinion, that just like during storm work, how National Grid doesn't do any cleanup, that's basically along the same lines. It was, they came down across their prop, you know, came down across National Grid property, will do all the work to get the line back up in the air, but we don't own the tree, it's not our cost, it was somebody else's that came down across our stuff. We put our lines back up, because that's the safest way to do it, is to have our crews do that, and they'll incur the cost of doing that, but they don't incur the cost even on storms of cleanup.
Yeah, then the homeowner has to incur the cost of, was it a tree or a town or...
Okay. Gordon?
Is there an estimated cost of renting a stump grinder?
That's different from rental company to rental company. I could even begin to tell you that. I mean, it depends on what, like, with rental company, you guys are...
So, it's a question of age of the people that have the stump grinder.
Well, yeah, yeah. I guess it, I was, Mr. Chairman, could we ask the Highway Surveyor if he has an estimate?
Sure.
And then maybe it's something we could add to town meeting in the fall to pay for the cost.
And I'll be honest, National Grid does remove stumps on occasion, but only if they are a public hazard. So like, if a tree is right on top of the edge of the road, you know, where it would be a plow hazard, we sometimes, we have the ability to get that cleaned out, but other than that, we don't do stumps.
His dilemma again for us is, we're always on National Grid to make sure that they've got the lines clear, so that we don't lose power, so now therein lies our dilemma.
Which is why the DPU is basically having us do this project, is because the towns in the area have expressed, expressed so much concern about the trees that are overhanging the line and every little storm that we have, the outages, so the main way to get those outages taken care of and back up again is to basically, what DPU and National Grid have a source, and most of the utilities that come up with this, the only way to ensure that that doesn't happen and to get stuff back up in a timely manner is to remove all the overhang and to remove all the stuff that's growing up into the power lines. the overhang and to remove all the stuff that's growing up into the power lines, so that's essentially what this project is focused on, is doing those two specific things.
Okay, anyone else have any questions?
Paul Gordon's answering, only, um, the stump grinder, we rented a, we hired a company to come in and they did us eight stumps and the cost is almost a thousand dollars, and now it's a good set of stumps, and that was just about five hours' work.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Do, do we have an idea about how many, how many total trees you're talking about, how many stumps we'd be looking at?
On town property, if I remember off the top of my head, one hundred and forty-four town trees, including two that he has asked us to remove that are across the street on the, the end of the line.
So, like, would a, a week's worth of a crew be able to handle that if it was coordinated through the highway department?
I have to keep moving and setting up, and that gets pretty time consuming.
Oh, yes, takes a while.
I think that.
Only though it takes more than a week, I think.
Yeah, I think that's just something that we would have to do as an afterward, rather than trying to do it at the same time, because then that, then that runs into a cluster of everybody trying to do something.
I'll be honest, I've had tree mitigation for National Grid for twelve years and now I'm on this project, ninety-nine percent of towns don't remove the stumps, ninety-nine point five percent of homeowners probably don't remove stumps, it's actually pretty rare that the homeowners actually end up removing the stumps, most of them just don't do it.
In that number that you just gave us of total stumps, and I, I know I'm asking a lot.
Well, that's over eight inches, that's, that's one time permits, that's what.
Some of those wouldn't be much to, to grind, but how many would be on town property and how many?
Uh, it's one hundred and forty-four removals on town property, those are the town trees.
Those, yeah, we're just talking about town trees right now, we're not even talking about any stumps on private property.
All right, I, I just wanted to make sure.
So, yes, that's the, uh, those are all of the trees, um, along Hudson, along Elm, as well as.
Elm.
Yeah, I said Elm.
Oak.
Oak Street, thank you.
And in regards to what Ryan was saying, that's also just trees eight inches in diameter and above.
Correct.
When we start ground cutting, if you go counting stumps, you might run into, I, I couldn't even begin to fathom the number, come up with a number, of trees eight inches in diameter and smaller that are gonna be stumped as well.
Typically, how close to the ground do you cut?
Uh, as close as tree crews can get it for the larger trees, generally.
Ten inches, eight, eight to ten, they shoot for eight to ten inches, and a lot of times that has to do with the flare of the tree coming out.
Yeah.
Uh, if there's rocks or, or foreign objects, obviously, they have to kind of build those, but then I think the SPAN calls for a minimum of eight to ten unless foreign objects are in the tree.
Okay, do you have a question?
Yeah, George Ford, Denver, four, one seventy Elm Street, how are the log bags to be taken down, what are you gonna do with the log during time? My property, they've got like eight trees, one's a hardwood, I would like the hardwood, but the rest of the pines, what's gonna happen with that log bag wood, I mean, some of these trees is twenty-four inches.
We have a log truck that works along with the tree crews, it'll be picking all the wood up, and the tree company will be disposing it wherever they possibly can, yeah, wherever they can.
We might have to take it pretty far.
Yes, I mean, if there's a tree on your property and you wanna keep, of course, you can hold it, but.
I can take them all out, and also have two rotted trees that are gonna land on my power lines, keeping my house, they're only six to eight inches diameter, are they, are they willing to take those?
Is it on your property or town property?
It's eight to ten feet from the street, I can't know.
If it's on a service drop, you talking about the, the wire that goes from the whole of your house?
Yes.
Okay, what we're being instructed to do as of now is you are to call the, the local regional office and ask them to send out a crew to evaluate the service drop lines?
I did call your company.
Yeah, but keep calling, most likely be on that this week.
Did you call the one-eight-hundred number for National Grid?
The number on the page, it was, it was in line, they were.
Oh, okay.
Different company.
Act of this, if you'd like, I can give you the one-eight-hundred number for National Grid.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kinda hard talking to your back, yeah.
Sorry. So, yeah, so, um, house drops and service drops aren't really what our program is geared towards, so they ask us just to filter those calls through the one-hundred number and let the regional arborist deal with those as he sees fit.
Anything that other than has already been mentioned, is anything new, does anyone like to add to the discussion?
I just wanted to ask about timeframes for it to start and what street you guys are thinking of.
So, we've actually already started the project in other towns on the circuit, East Bridgewater is currently being worked as of this moment, because we did not receive a permit for Halifax previously, we were skipping Halifax and moving to Pembroke, so it's however quickly the tree crews can manage to get through that work, given weather and storms, would be how quick they would start Halifax, as far as a starting place for Halifax, we'd probably be starting on Elm Street and working our way up through the work from there.
You have any idea, thirty days, two weeks?
Again, we just had that tornado touchdown, so I mean, all tree crews are pulling off their work and everybody's working over there, so we could say, if we set our best guess is, I wanna say forty-five days, would be my absolute best guess, but that could, you know, that, that could extend out to sixty-five, seventy-five days easily.
We're in storm season.
Yeah, exactly, so, the, my best guess could be somewhere in the area of a month and a half to two months, would be my best guess.
There, there's probably, for an approximation, about a month and a half of actual work left in those two towns before we would hit Halifax to begin with, if you factor in one or two small-scale storms where they, you know, lose a day or two of work, obviously, that's gonna add more time on to it.
And to put it out there, once we have a permit in hand and we bring that to National Grid, they could appear with a set of crews that need something to do, and they can put the work on tomorrow, so it's just.
Everything's true.
It's a very loaded question.
So, yeah, I'm giving estimates based on the crews which I have available to me right now.
Okay. Yes?
Well, speaking on Elm Street, does the homeowner need to be at the property in that sixty-five to seventy-five day timeframe or one and a half months, and will we receive a notice that the work's about to begin?
What you will receive is we will leave notices on everybody's door, and it's just gonna, it's just gonna be a pamphlet with a quick overview, and again, that's not gonna give an exact date, to answer your question, no, you don't need to be on the property, once you've signed off permission, we've discussed the project, yeah, nobody needs to be there for it, the tree crews will come, do their job, and then move on, as far as the notifications, we drop notifications on the door, but that still technically means it could be, you know, up to thirty to sixty days prior to the work beginning, it's just our final notification that the tree crews, we have, that we are coming.
Um, thank you, and the reason I ask the question is, we did request to keep the wood, and so in the event the homeowners are not there, would that arrangement change?
No, it's right on all the paperwork, and if the tree crews have, who wants to keep their wood and wants to get rid of it, and if there's any question, I'm sure your phone number's on the paperwork, tree crews can reach out to you.
Great, and just one more, and then I'll be quiet, where would we, if we weren't at the property for the time they start, where would we expect that those logs would be?
As they take the tree down, wherever the trees, I mean, obviously, they'll move some of the stuff around, because they're still gonna be chipping the brush, but it's pretty much where the logs fall, and it's where they are for you to take care of them.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'm sorry, one left, Pat Michaels over on Elm Street as well, so, we have on our house, on our, the trees on our house where we, you know, we'd signed off, we just have the, like, the red tags where you guys are gonna be dropping them, there's other trees down that we see on Elm Street that have the red tags, and then they get notice in a, you know, a sheet, what's the difference between those?
Okay, that's a simple one.
All around this.
Yeah, all, all the ones that have the, the white notices on them, those are all the town trees, all the ones that just the red tags, those are the property owners, so if there's a white notice table to it, that's just a notice for this hearing.
Okay, Troy, we did have two residents come in this week, sorry, residents at one-fifty-eight Elm Street indicated that they feel a hickory tree in front of the house should be trimmed, enough not to interfere with the lines, but should be removed, right now it's listed as a remove, um, they're fine with the work on the pine trees in front of the property, and then we had a resident at three-fourteen Elm Street who recommends a tree that's not on the list, there's a maple in front of his property, be taken down while it is not interfering with the wires now, and the loss of limbs or the tree itself will take down the wires, it may be that it's farther away from your normal bounds, if you could take a look at that.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you could just jot that down on the paperwork, we'll think about that tomorrow, that's fine.
Any further questions on the board? Anything further from the audience? The last question?
Yeah, we gotta just respond to something that was said, if that's okay, but no, with all due respect, these gentlemen, and I do mean that, we had a lovely conversation in my friend's house the day I heard about this, but I, I'm not sure where the power lies here and what the decision-making authority is between selectmen and, and result, but again, my issue is, it's gonna cost, in addition to the other harm, which is understandable, it's gonna cost me money, and it's gonna cost, take a look down before, it's shaded, the response that this is just how National Grid does it at ninety-nine percent of the communities, is, I say this to my Democratic leader, elected, not sufficient for me as a homeowner about to.
Well, that's, I wanna see a copy of the policy, because I can't discuss the policy unless I know what's in it.
But even if that's the policy, I don't know where the law was.
Well, I'm sure there's always an exception to, to the rule, depending on how it's presented, you know that as well as I do, you're in those situations, so, let's get the copy of the policies, then we'll discuss what.
And the DPU's involved, and I'm sure the DPU has set out the guidelines for this stuff.
Well, as, as I said, it comes down to the fact that National Grid doesn't own trees, you know, National Grid can't, you know, can't come back on the homeowners who trees hit the lines, you know, they just kinda get stuck into doing tree work because it's just.
Well, they have to buy product of trees, they have telephone poles, come on.
Well, they're also the ones being called upon to repair the lines in the middle of a storm, so, you know.
So, it, what it comes down to, there's a certain amount of work that National Grid has to do by regulation in order to maintain their infrastructure, which depending upon the type of structures we're talking about, is either federally or state mandated, which we have to do.
I guess that, to sum it up quick, we're incurring a cost of the trees, just as you gentlemen will talk about possibly incurring a cost of some stump grounding, homeowners that have to, have to sit back and think, that they would have to incur some cost of planting the current tree species, as if this was the correct, the correct tree species planted under the lines to begin with, there'd be no cost incurred at all, because we wouldn't even be advocating for.
Well, where can you get a list of these correct species of trees?
They're working on that, because that's in flux, right?
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's, that one, the list currently is there, and that list is correct, it's just the.
It's outdated.
The availability of the species of trees on the list, so if the list has.
The tree's thirty years old.
Yeah, exactly, so those, those trees are still the species of trees that are compatible.
Excuse me.
Every tree on the list is a tree suitable for planting underneath or near, and addressed power lines or ringed power lines, uh, just the availability of all trees on the list might not be there due to some of these trees might have died off in species due to diseases attacking them, so nurseries might still not carry every tree on the list, that's all I was saying before.
Call for availability.
If somebody wants to look at the list and pick a tree up, just please check availability of the tree before you decide.
Okay, I, I, hopefully, we've answered all the questions, but we have tied agenda tonight.
Can I?
Going through, just one, go right here.
So, this is a different program though than what was instituted before, so, the trees that were, could have been planted to regulation before, now.
Same, same regulations, it's right, it's essentially, any trees that fit ISA's right to right place would be considered wire-friendly species.
I, I guess what I'm saying is you've moved out the distance from the, the wires, though.
Two feet.
Okay.
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't go back anything significantly, we just, we went back two feet, and then we, instead of just doing a ten-foot above, or fifteen feet above and ten feet below, we're going ground to sky to ensure that there's no more overhang off of the lines.
Okay, for, for broken limbs.
Yes.
For preventive maintenance.
Exactly.
What, what do you need from the board either tonight or at some future meeting in order to go, to proceed?
To proceed, we'd be bringing tree wards, tree wards permit, that's all we need.
So, do, does the board wish to continue this hearing to the next meeting while we get copies of the policies, or does?
Yeah, I'd like to take a look at the trees too myself, so, just for the sake of doing it.
I would make the motion to continue the hearing to the next meeting.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion?
Well, let's get a time for this.
All in favor?
Seven fifteen.
If we can, um, well.
Seven o'clock?
Are we gonna start the meeting at seven, though?
Seven o'clock.
Okay, sure.
Is that the thirteenth?
Thirteenth, yes, August thirteenth.
Okay, I have another scheduled meeting, and I'd like to.
No, no, we didn't, okay, moved, a second.
All in favor?
All right.
You cut me off.
I'm sorry, sir.
That's all right, didn't hurt.
Okay.
Thank you for coming today.
Thank you, everybody.
Any changes?
I'm using one of those rubber knives.
Yeah, and now we have the happy dragon, or the dragoness.
We'll let the room clear. Ready, boy?
Oh, we're ready.
Okay. I'm Ted Wong, you turn.
You wanna come up front, Mr. Wong?
Sure.
Not actually, I'm gonna stay in the back of the class. What am I calling?
You're not being punked.
Call.
You get an opportunity to be on camera, come on up front.
I'll pass the one.
So, now we're here before the board to ask for, I changed the manager from previous manager. Any questions?
Now, are, are you gonna have two managers, or you just gonna?
No, no, the, the former manager's no longer working at the restaurant.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, he just didn't work out, so we put number one in place.
What if, what if she doesn't work out?
That would be selfish. Without her, it's no good, hot and sour restaurant, so I, I hope you've enjoyed our presence here, so, time you've been here.
Yes, very much.
We just made the promise, now, we have a history.
Oh, please, and the food is.
It is.
No, the food's great, unfortunately, I've just become a diabetic, so I can't eat.
Yeah, I'm diabetic too, but that's what it's for, that's what insulin's for.
Yeah, yeah, well, I'm a little more concerned than that.
You can't stand needles.
Well, really, I can't either, but you have to, the sugar level.
Well, you don't have to, because you have a choice between eating and not eating it, but then it's a.
It's a quality of life issue.
Yes.
So, so, it's gonna be under your name, Lily, now, as manager, owner, corporation, what, what name is gonna be?
There's no specific requirement other than that.
This is all that's happening, is to change the manager, the corporation, everything else is not changing.
Right, everything's.
Well, you never know.
I certainly have no problem with that.
I don't have any.
I'll move that if that needs a.
Long as you keep having good service down there, it's awesome.
Yeah, no, no trees.
And all the paperwork and everything is in.
Yeah, they're all in favor, yeah.
Can, can make sure that I do.
Oh, no, you had it all.
Did you move it, Tom?
Yes.
You seconded it?
Yeah.
All in favor?
All right. We're done.
See you in two weeks.
No, no, fifteen, fifteen minutes.
Now, keep coming, citizens.
We gotta work on a diabetic menu, all right?
Yeah, can you, can you have?
But you can make requests now, make requests.
Can, can you have shrimp that's, you know, you know, not diabetic, right?
Yeah, I go, I go China, Chinese market and pick the live one.
What's a non-dietary shrimp?
Still alive when you eat it.
That's like sushi, right?
Yeah. No, 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 I mean, none of that.
Well, you don't, there's no grease or anything else in it, you're just eating natural.
Well, taste ain't great, either. More taste than you're eating.
Yeah, yeah, right.
Hey, 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 you don't know that.
Yeah, it's just like a...
You call in an order, you need to give them a date before and go to Chinese market.
Oh, special order.
Yeah, I'm only joking.
Yeah.
You are.
Yeah, and if you're not, you're going to be.
This is not looking good.
Well, my doctor says just move...
You hang around with us, you know.
I dropped four, it doesn't, it doesn't...
And there's exercise too.
Yeah, exercise, it's your diet, it's all about diet.
I said I try. I see my doctor tomorrow.
Okay. Well, it's easy, it's easier when you're at home, you can control what you're doing. But if you have a life and you actually are outside your home every once in a while.
Watch the A1C.
Okay, we have two more hearings to go through and good luck.
Thank you.
And it really is, the food is good.
Thank you. Good luck though.
You're also, I'm going to send this in the ADCC form, all right? And you guys can get an email.
Sounds good.
Okay, thanks.
Good night.
And you can call our...
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
See ya.
We have a continuation or revocation of...
For revocation hearing for Davis Automotive, regarding their planable storage license. They've not made any progress in making payments for the motor vehicle excise tax. Therefore, I'm recommending to the board that the board revoke the license effective August fourteenth. Reason for that date is that will give Davis Automotive another three weeks to get a payment plan and start making payments with the Collector Treasurer's office if by the thirteenth, when the board meets again, and the board can reiterate what its decision is tonight. I will notify Davis Automotive of the decision tonight and that will give them again sufficient time to make amends and the board can rescind its vote tonight when it gets to the thirteenth if they backstart a payment plan.
Any questions?
Do you know when the last payment cycle would have stopped?
Oh, it's been three months now? I think two or, it's been at least two months if not three months at this point. I know they brought themselves up to date on their property taxes with the May payment and then they still had thousands of dollars for the motor vehicle excise for back payments and there's been no payments since early May at the very least.
We obviously want to give them every opportunity, but at some point we have to be fair to everybody else.
I would recommend that we go with the suggested name, right? Charlie?
So, this will be revocation effective on August fourteenth, the day after the next elections meeting.
Is that a motion, Troy?
It's a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Then we, I sincerely hope that they...
Yeah, nobody wishes them any ill, I think.
The seven fifty appointment you have is the revocation hearing continuance for Country Public Halifax. This was again on their fuel storage license. I was notified by the Collector's Office late this afternoon that in fact they now have caught up on their personal property taxes, which was what was outstanding. So, my recommendation to the board is that they close the hearing and no action be taken.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the next official appointment is at eight, so if you want me to, I can get through some more stuff.
If you can. I know.
Highway, damn road. We handled FEMA grants, we did the highway materials contract.
How's it going?
Good, how are you?
Met to met.
Zoning enforcement officer, investigated the idea of having a special zoning enforcement officer deal with the issue of determining whether a site plan would be needed for the project of three ninety-five Plymouth Street. I contacted, per advice of our land use council, Chris, I contacted Chris Carmichael, who's a building commissioner and zoning enforcement officer over in Norden. He'd be able to make that determination how the cost would be between three and four hundred dollars. I would take it out of the legal budget. I guess there are two things, one is if the board wanted to make that appointment for this particular instance and the second whether it wanted to direct Mr. Carmichael to make a determination now or wait for a building permit to be requested or for someone else to come into the building inspector's zoning enforcement officers, office to ask for a determination. Take it in any order you want.
You know...
Can't get it done sooner rather than later.
To avoid any conflict, I think we should go forward with it. It's not going to cost us any less later on, is it?
No. So, then I will recommend that the board approve appointing Mr. Carmichael as a special zoning enforcement officer for this particular issue and that they request Mr. Carmichael to make a determination as to whether a site plan is required, at least based on the proposals that have been brought and approved by the ZVA. And I believe are sitting with the building inspector at this point, not in terms of a building permit, at least the files are there.
Is there a motion?
I'm going to recuse myself because I could be seen as potentially having a conflict in this. I don't think I do, but just to be safe here.
Well, I'll move it. Is there a second?
So, on that note, should I...
Well, if both of you are going to recuse yourself, I'm going to ask you to then use the rule of necessity because I'll need two votes and then have both of you vote that. I mean, basically, I'm not trying to be funny about, but both of you will be in essence waving your hands and indicating, yes, we did effort, is the potential that we have at least an appearance of no real conflict of interest, but nevertheless via the rule of necessity in that the board's selectmen needs to in fact make a determin... Determination, pun intended, about whether or not to hire Mr. Carmichael to do this work.
We've at least declared...
I'll ask that both of you vote, in fact, invoke that and vote on this.
Instead of voting on the outcome, you're voting on the process by which we can get to the outcome.
So, I would recuse myself other than, and both of us need to invoke the rule of necessity.
How do we do that?
Well, you're doing it right now.
Oh, okay.
I revoke!
Okay, look at us, doing things we don't even know.
Involve the rule of necessity. There are no voices from the heavens or anything like that or...
Not yet.
Nothing else happens outside, it's a normal vote now. So, that the board, the members have indicated that there might be an appearance of a conflict of interest and under normal circumstances, they, both of them would recuse themselves. But in order in fact for the board to move forward on this, it requires at least two of them to vote, two members to vote. Therefore, both of them are going to invoke the rule of necessity so there's no advantage or disadvantage for either of them participating and we'll move forward and they'll vote as normal.
I'll move it.
A second?
Those in favor?
Those in favor?
Aye.
So, I'll contact Mr. Carmichael and ask him to contact...
Adjust for the record, I do not know Mr. Carmichael.
Nor do I.
Clear.
Okay, I have a whole bunch of signature authorities. I believe that these get signed off in most cases by the board as a whole for several of the departments. I think for the selectmen themselves, they make a determination as to who's going to sign off on the payroll. So, I'll pass those down. This is an annual thing we have to do for several of the departments. We've got a couple of minutes left. I had someone come in about these, what I call the stub on Water Street. Water Street is a street that enters, goes into in essence Mont Ponce Pond on the north side of East Mont Ponce Pond. It intersects Lake Street, Longwood Street North for instance, intersects Lake Street as does Water Street.
I'm sorry.
Back when the lots were subdivided more than a hundred years ago in that area, what happened was obviously we ended up with a lot of small lots and the street layout, and in many cases the streets don't exist, literally paper streets.
We sign on these outlines?
Department head's going to be you, you'll sign with the date. Then if you weren't available to sign payroll, we'll delegate either Gordon or Tom to do that.
They're here?
No, they're going to have to, so someone, if the two of you could come to a decision as to who will sign payroll if Troy's not here? Okay, so Gordon would sign underneath there, eventually all three of you sign this.
You sign the top sheet. Sign the back sheet, Gordon signs here.
And that's one for the selectmen. So, and so what happened was...
Do you need your signature here too?
Not signatures, no, your names are up there just as the members of the board. So...
So, is this to pay ourselves or to pay everybody?
Pay me for instance, pay Pam, not yourselves two to go.
So, you just need him or do you need...
I don't need, I think for a couple of those sheets, I need all three of you.
Okay.
This, I need the three of you signing down here under selectmen approval that you approve me signing the data processing bills and payroll. And that's true, I think, for some of the other departments that are included there. Where, so where there are places for three signatures down at the bottom, if all three of you would sign those.
They're not saying that one about?
You did not.
Okay.
So, a hundred years ago when the subdivisions were driven, what happened was that the prospective property owners were given certain rights to get down to Mont Ponce Street. If you think about the ocean beaches and where the subdivisions there, lots of times when they were subdivided, people were granted, you know, a way to get to the beach and it was the same thing, a way to get to Mont Ponce Pond. Over the years, obviously, some of those stubs have not been used, trees may have grown up and everything like that. And we've had some property issues in regards to abutters trying to take over those stubs. In this case, this is on Water Street, we've had an abutter appears to have put their boat there and some other objects and materials on the stub and we had someone come to point that out and in essence complain. What I'm going to recommend at this point, I had notified both the police chief and the fire chief and the fire chief noted, it would be helpful, there's many ways of accessing Mont Ponce Pond as possible. In this case, Water Street, there are a lot of trees right by the water's edge, it's not going to be the easiest access, but nevertheless, he doesn't want the town to be losing its property rights. And what I'm suggesting is that the board notify the two abutters simply saying, not to take any action saying, you must remove this boat, but in essence to say, we're going to retain our rights to use this stub if we want to. You're putting a boat in such there isn't going to...
Give it to you adverse profession.
Or really, of course, our rights. Now, as regards anybody else's rights, we're not going there, we're talking about the town's rights.
All you need is a highway truck driving up it a little bit every once in a while and drive away.
If that would be okay with the board. So, if there are places for three signatures, you sign all...
No, it's not three signatures.
This vendor warrant?
Okay, so usually the board doesn't do, Pam, if I'm correct, we usually don't have one member sign the vendor warrant.
This form kind of is...
Well, it depends on the board of committee, in some cases some...
So, sign it here, you got Troy, he's going to sign, you got...
Gordon will sign in case Troy's not here. For the vendor warrant, we just skip over, we don't...
No, yeah, we're going to skip over because we just do, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's fine, okay.
But for the other departments, for instance, whether it was the fire or the police or the IT or anything like that, what happens is that those departments say, okay, the police chief's going to sign, the fire chief's going to sign, I'll sign. And then the board down at the bottom where there are three signatures, the board says, yes, we approve having the police chief or Charlie or Jason sign those.
Can I make an assumption it's cooler outside than it is in here?
Troy and you got...
Yeah, I would turn the AC, I would turn the AC on, but it'd be too noisy unfortunately.
So, Troy needs to sign the warrant with this one, so this one is not applicable to us, so I'll hurry down.
You have to kill all the bugs though, Tom.
Troy needs to sign the ticket.
This is no screening though.
Yeah. So, once the board is ready, we've hit the eight o'clock hour, soon we came back. No, it's okay, we were... We were signing all your forms.
Oh, all right, good.
And to discuss recycling, two pieces. One is the board goes through an annual process of setting the recycling fee for each fiscal year. I believe Pam, each of them have a copy, I can in fact see it right in Gordon's folder right now.
Yeah, there was that little bit, yeah, this one right here.
Which shows revenues, yeah, which shows revenues as expenses both combined then for each of the programs. Right now, the recycling fee is fifty dollars per year for residents who wish to participate in it. You know, Sandy talked with me about this, she's recommending that we leave it at fifty dollars. I don't know if Steve and Susan feel the same way. It's not perfectly imbalanced by itself right now, we're losing a little bit of money on the recycling. But on the other hand, we are making money on a couple of the elements of the recycling solid waste program. It may make more sense for right now, especially that we've got enough of a balance in the fund to offset any minor losses to just keep the fee the same.
And we just increased the cost on the bags.
We just did.
Yeah, which, which I didn't realize that I was at that meeting. There was no meeting.
Well, there was an announcement made during the meeting.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
So, if the board feels otherwise, we make a motion to do something else. If the board has questions, everybody's here to answer them.
As a citizen of the town of Halifax, I recommend that we read the same...
The fee at fifty dollars.
Fifty dollars for the household.
Second, if you want.
I'm good with it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can I just, there's been talk about establishing a committee to review the recycling program that we have and the trash program that we have because obviously this is a subject that Todd can elaborate on it. The recycling business is under a lot of strain right now.
Solid waste too.
Yeah. So, we're seeing a lot of increases in costs and that's one of the issues with the program. And you can see how the numbers have changed over the last few years. So, we were, there was thought about establishing a committee to research and bring to the town if it's appropriate, a different solution.
I had occasion to speak with Sue recently and this is one of the subjects that came up. I was inquiring as to how many years ago the solid waste committee, or the solid waste committee, right? Had disbanded and a long time ago.
Yeah.
And I think we both came to a consensus, it would be a good idea to get some more, for no other reason than to have the community involved as opposed to just the people in the town government engaged in this so that there's feedback from everybody. Our concern, of course, is whether we can get any volunteers for this, but I think it's a good idea. I think it has merit, we should do something.
The goal would be to establish a committee as soon as possible and if there were going to be any changes, try to bring it to, back to the selectmen.
By January, yeah, because the idea is if we're going to make substantial changes in the program and try and have those implemented for fiscal twenty-one, part of it's going to be the budget process, part of it's going to be the planning process that would take some time to implement. Along with that, but my hope is, because we left a little time tonight for this, was to get some preliminary discussion going on in a sense of, obviously Halifax is not the only community facing all these things. As with many things in Massachusetts, there are three hundred and fifty-one different ways that cities and towns are dealing with all this. And, but Todd especially, but also Susan and Steve might be able to give some input as to what trends are being seen there in our communities other than Halifax reacting to that because obviously everybody does it differently, but everybody in a sense is being affected by the same trends no matter what their current operations are like.
Has the state tried to do anything and has any outcry from the towns to the state about the recycling? And if so, what was the response?
So, there's been a tremendous outcry from almost every municipality across the town alone. The state, well, DEP, I won't say the state, but DEP has...
That state.
True. Just one of the many governing bodies, I guess, has taken some really interesting steps to try and help the municipalities out. And one of that, they just offered a micro grant for up to like fifty thousand dollars or so to help foster new business to come in and actually come up with new ideas and concepts on how to deal with this stuff because the single stream rates are going up, which is not just that, the market commodity value has dropped so low that it's not covering the processing fees, which the municipalities have to pay for. So, that's why the rates are going up. That's kind of the way that operates. As far as what DEP has done to help curb some of those cost increases is to really clean up that stream because it is dirty. Luckily in Halifax, it's pretty darn clean. I mean, when we did the IQ kit here, it really wasn't much change because it really wasn't that bad of a stream. And a lot of that, that was when Jason was driving.
Tom, when you talk about the stream, just for studio, not studio, it's for a TV audience, if you can tell, say a little bit more, what we're talking about, the stream, stream of what?
Okay, so the stream is all of your recycling mixed together in a one, one container, or what we call single stream. So, that's your papers, plastics, cardboard, metal, you know, aluminum and tin, not metal per se, but aluminum and tin cans. So, all that goes in the one container, so we just, like, all that is stream. But as far as what the state's done so far, they did the micro grant, they've been doing the IQ kit now for, I believe, four years. This will be the fourth cycle of it. And the IQ kit is really becoming wildly popular because it does target those individuals that are not doing it correctly. They're putting the plastic bags in the recycling or they're bagging their recycling in plastic bags. So, what happens is if you put your recycling in a plastic bag, it gets to the merf, which is...
Jams things up.
It goes into the trash, they don't even rig it open. So, they just lost all that, all... So they just lost all that, all that good material that was in there is now in the trash. It's going to go to CMES, it's going to get burned, it's going to go to Landville, it's the two options.
Then you have the disposal costs there, for instance. Somebody, somebody's paying, and they're going to pay it, which means they're going to charge us for having to do that.
Exactly, so they're, they, unfortunately, you have residue which is already built into the equation, but now you've got the extra trash that's in there, or what they consider trash, that's an extra charge. So that is why these rates are going up, is because the single stream commodity is not cleaned up.
Not everybody's playing by the rules.
It's not that they're playing by the rules, it's I think, I think a majority of it is people really want to do the right thing, and the problem is every single thing, just go home tonight and take a look, you know, if you're throwing stuff away or putting it in a recycling bin, just take a look at it and see if there's a little Mobius symbol, a little triangle on it, almost everything has that. I'd say ninety-nine point nine percent of the stuff you bring home has that thing on it, and that's deceiving, that doesn't mean it's recyclable. It just means that they want to try and get it recycled, doesn't mean there's an end process that can actually recycle it. So plastic bags, they all have that, technically they are recyclable, the problem is if you put them into the stream here, they get caught in machinery, now they have downtime, which means their, their, their cost of doing business increases, which, in which case that rolls downhill, municipalities and the private haulers have to cover those extra charges. So as far as, you know, the IQ kit goes, that's to help clean up the stream, there's a number of those, I'm actually just going to a meeting tomorrow with Quincy, they're going to start the IQ kit, you guys did it last year, it was successful, although there wasn't a whole lot of stuff to target. It did help, and the driver now, Melissa-
Yeah.
Is doing a good job, she's tagging the bins, she's turning stuff away, she's doing what she's supposed to be doing, so Halifax is actually doing a pretty good job. There are a lot of municipalities that are doing the single stream recycling, there are also some that actually have gone back from single stream to source separated, and what I mean by that is they're separating their paper out from their plastics, from their tin and aluminum. So they're actually going back and separating, back in the old days, you guys probably had that before single stream, I think, those were all my times, so they're, they've gone back, there's a number of municipalities that have done that. It hasn't cut the cost increases, but it's decreased some of the cost of doing business.
But there are costs in one place or another, right, so either if you have the residents do it, you have to hope that they're going to, when they put their stuff out on the curbside, go back to how it was separated, let's say fifteen years ago, you need at least two bins, you need, in essence, a paper bin and you need a plastic metal glass bin. And you have to hope that people put stuff in the correct bins, because if you're not, then the amount of time that it takes someone who's picking it up, they have to look, okay, no, I gotta throw this one in over here, no, it's the other way around, or you bring it to a place where it has to, basically, unless you have the machinery, you have to do it by hand to sort everything, which, so there's a cost associated no matter what you do, the hope is that by doing all that, you're lowering the disposal costs, but one way or the other, you're picking up the costs, and what you're saying is, what are those municipalities doing, are they doing at the curbside, so hoping that residents separate out properly, are they bringing it to their own facility and having it separated there?
So, in my district, which I have thirty-one units that I look out for, I've had one drop off community that's gone backwards and gone to the source separated. Yeah, there was some complaining because of the inconvenience factor, which I totally disagree with, it's not an inconvenience, you're going to go there anyway and put it in one, one containment area or another, it's not necessarily-
How does the truck handle that?
Well, I don't think there's any curbside communities, I, I trucks are capable-
That's what I'm getting at, yeah.
I'm aware of one municipality in the state of three hundred and fifty-one, I guess they all have different things, and I think you said it best, that actually has a curbside program that went to source separate a curbside, they went back. That's a tough thing to do, it's a very, very tough-
It's a mindset.
You're changing, yeah, and once again, you're stealing a convenience factor away from someone, that's the way they're going to view it and they don't like it.
There'll be tremendous resistance from that.
Yeah.
Even from myself.
Quite proven.
Say what?
So right now, it's every other week pickup?
Yeah.
Would there be a way to pick up one week paper, one week plastic, and try to-
I don't know if we could do that, because then you'd have to do the whole town, because we only do half the town, one week, and, so, just the miles, because this town's so, the houses are so far away from each other, I don't know if we would be able to do that.
Be cost effective?
It'd be a full time, it would be a full day for the driver.
Yeah.
So instead of what, three, four hours a day, that she'd be working eight.
Yeah, so then, then there's a cost of that.
Because you still have the same amount of stops, whether they're-
Right.
So, the other communities that are doing, are separating, are they separating it, they're taking everything from curbside, or their residents are bringing it to the drop off but not separated, and then are they doing it at their own facility, or?
Most of them are drop off, so, a number of the facilities that have gone backwards have been drop off, there's only been one curbside, and they did exactly what you, what you mentioned, which was do half the recycling one week and then pick up the other half, so paper, plastics, or whatever it is, and then, you know, aluminum and tin, so, that's, that's the way they did it for the curbside program, so, and I don't know if it's been successful yet, it's fairly, it's fairly recent that they did this switch.
One other question, how many people do you see using the curbside versus how many people go to drop off at the building, would you-
I don't, I don't have numbers, but I mean, I drop off is, is busy.
Is busy, yeah.
But I think if you sent to them, if you bring your stuff down to the recycling center, it has to be separated, it would drop in half, and they'd just put it out of the car because of the convenience. I mean, I live in Houston, I can't imagine if I had to go back to, to separate, that, because it's just too easy now. I just think we would just get such kickback.
I think single stream actually accelerated the program in town.
Oh, it did, yeah.
Because originally, I think we were separating-
It was being separated, the plastic.
Colored glass.
Colored glass, the cans, the papers, and the plastics.
Yeah, I mean, most people don't even have the room to be able to put that many containers out.
Right. And what happened too with the single stream is we lost, lost the revenue from the newspaper.
Right.
That was really, we, newspaper and cardboard, we just had cardboard go out, we normally would get anywhere between sixty, and maybe up to a hundred and twenty dollars a ton, I just got six dollars and seven cents a ton on the last one.
Wow.
It's not worth bailing it, but we can't throw it away because we're paying ninety-three dollars to throw it away. So it's just-
So you take the hit.
We just take the hit and we bail it.
Yeah, cardboard got down again last month.
I couldn't believe it.
So what countries are not buying from taking our trash these days, is that why we have such a problem?
So China with the national sword, when they finally enacted that about a year ago, really, they didn't necessarily quit taking our stuff, they quit taking the garbage that we were sending, okay? They were still taking the individual stuff that was properly bailable, which is clean cardboard, they cut out plastics for a while, I think they're still cutting that out, they want very, very little things now. And then you've got, what is it? I think it was, I want to say Vietnam, maybe, something like that, anyway, they're sending fifteen hundred containers back because they're so contaminated, which is trash, you know, and a lot of everyone likes to say, well, we send our trash to their, no, it was recycling with trash in it, and it was the trash part that was getting us in trouble. That's a technical, that's a technical, logical issue, I guess you could say, because we don't necessarily have, and I know in Massachusetts, we don't have a state of the art merf, I know Mike Marra just built one down in Rochester, zero waste, which is really cool, sorters, the whole nine yards, forty-five million bucks in, in the latest technology, that's the most, that's the best one we have right now. When you go to Avon, which is where your stuff is going-
Ten to ten.
-twenty to thirty years old, you know, and you're talking technology, you know, you buy a phone today, it's obsolete tomorrow, same thing happens with the merf.
So Todd, what's different between this modern version and the Avon, what, what differentiates them and how does that help us?
Better optical sorters, so instead of doing, you know, three streams of material that can be sorted optically, it'll do nine to twenty, something like that, I don't, I'm not sure what the capabilities that it has, it's much better, it's, it's newer technology, so it's got better computers in there and the whole nine yards.
What's an optical sorter, what is it, what is it looking at?
Okay, so an optical sorter is looking at dimension and density, so a piece of paper, one dimension is flat, right, so the optical sorter looks at that, it sprays air, the, the paper goes up. Plastics, plastics all have, you know, between HDBE, LDPE, polypropylene, they've all got different density levels, water bottles are a little denser, they're, they're really squishy, and then you've got a, a solid drinking cup, that would be polypropylene, right, it's a little bit thicker and sturdy, it will actually be able to differentiate between those two, and so it'll do a shot of air for the polypropylene, that'll go into this bin, the HDBE or LDPE will go in there.
And because those are three D rather than one D or two D.
Yeah, yeah, so it could, it actually looks, it's really neat stuff, if you haven't taken a tour now, I highly encourage you to do that. And then they've got, on the newer lines, they need less people, but now they're hiring more people because they need more people to clean up the stream. So Avon doubled their staff over at Waste Management just to pick stuff, because it's a, it's a more activated system, where zero waste will have half the amount of people and the stream will be probably ninety-five percent cleaner when it goes through there, it's going to be, it's pretty neat. But yeah, so.
So if we wanted to go to new-
Machine, machine.
What are the advantages and disadvantages for us?
One year in a contract with Waste Management, so you've got a term, you've got a-
We've got a year and a half left, I think.
Yeah, the disadvantage, that would be a disadvantage, the advantage would be, you could possibly, and I'm not, I don't know this for fact, you might get a better rate because it's newer equipment, so maybe instead of paying, what is it, ninety-two bucks a ton or whatever, you might get something in the sixty dollar range, I don't, I don't know what it's charging.
Because what we're saying is not only are we paying a certain amount of money, something resembling ninety-two, a hundred, whatever it is, to bring the solid waste down to Lakeville or Rochester, we're now spending ninety-two or whatever to bring recyclable material to Avon.
It actually costs, we're only paying eighty-five dollars a ton right now with the brand new Waste Management contract, I think it's eighty-five, to get rid of garbage, we're paying ninety-three dollars to get it accepted.
Now, is the eighty-five just, but that eighty-five doesn't include the transport costs, we're paying-
No, that's just the tonnage of what-
So the tipping, so the tipping is eighty-five, then we add the transportation, whereas for Avon, we're paying a straight ninety-two or ninety-three, but, but we're paying for our machine or truck to go down there.
Yeah. And then we have to obviously pay, like, for the compactor and stuff to be pulled and then brought, brought there too, but that's only once every five weeks.
So the new machine that you put in a few, about a year ago now, isn't it?
Yeah, it's been fantastic, we used to-
It's working well.
We can't go out of there, it's like every five weeks, sometimes six.
It gets confusing when you've got two bobs down there.
It's wrong and wrong.
So are there communities that are basically throwing up their hands and giving up at this point? And if they do, what's the, is there a legal liability for a community to just say, we're going to get out of this business?
So, those are good questions, and I'm not sure the proper way to answer that, however, I will say that there is a state waste ban law, and it is not going anywhere anytime soon. You are required to divert that material that is recyclable away from the trash. As far as what the state inspectors do, I have nothing to do with it.
But I mean, if we give up the business, if we stop our business, then that burden falls on-
The residents.
Well, on the residents, but then also on the haulers, in a sense, if they're using private haulers, the private hauler at some point is going to have to be dealing with the same costs that we are.
If they take, for example, if they take a load to CMES and it's over ten percent, say cardboard, if they have twelve percent of cardboard in there, they're going to get a notice, and if they get enough notices, they will get a fine. And most of the time, they're not even allowed to dump, they will pack the truck back up and tell them to hit the road until they clean it up. So there are consequences to do it, to try and, to get around that.
But not for the town, if the town just basically says, you're going to be dealing with, you know, we're out of the business, here's a, here are a selection of haulers that are licensed to pick up, you know, via the Board of Health here in Halifax, we don't do the rates, we don't make approvals, we're not recommending, but here's the list, because I remember, this is, you know, long back when I was much, much younger, Raleigh, up on the North Shore, we had an old landfill there in the pre-cap days, and what happened was we ran into similar situation here, we had private haulers, and what it came down to is, we ought to get out of the business, we were losing money, and we just threw up our hands and said, sorry, you're the private haulers, go to it, now this was, obviously, this is thirty years ago, and so, the, the regulations and everything else, laws, were not the same as they were thirty years ago, but I don't even know if, what Raleigh does now, but at that point, we gave up the whole thing.
Yeah, but that's, that's, that's an imposition on senior citizens, people disabled, individuals who can't go out and do the things, or even can't afford to pay a hauler with the fees that's coming down, that would, I wouldn't even-
And that's my issue with, I was talking to Tom about it, you know, do you get totes? Do you, then you have a senior that can move that tote, they don't generate that much garbage, they use one small bag a week, and all of a sudden you're like, here's a sixty-five gallon tote, we're going to charge three hundred dollars.
Two thirty-five.
I just agree with thirty-five, we know that.
It's one bag, that's what it is, it's one bag every week.
We'll get locked out of town. We have a total disagreement on the size of the trash.
If Brockton did it, I'm pretty sure Halifax did it.
Yeah.
Brockton, that's a whole nother story, Brockton, the size of their rubbish container is ridiculous.
Yeah, they're thirty, they're this big.
Yeah.
That's what he wants out of us.
It's useless.
Well, it's one bag, you pay the-
I mean, I can do it because I have a compactor.
How about four, I'm gonna split the difference with forty-eight.
So you're, what they're arguing, folks, is that many communities have the larger barrels, you'll see the private haulers have the barrels, and obviously, there are pluses and minuses for people, people, and, because the haulers will charge a flat rate per week or per month for taking your barrel and whatever in there, if you're not getting rid of a lot of trash, if you're in one of those households that just has one bag, it may not make sense for you in terms of the economics to do it, if you're getting rid of a lot of trash, it does, but that also works into, one of the reasons for us doing the per bag system is that encourages people to do recycling, because what we're doing is simply, for fifty dollars a year, all your recyclables go in a recycling container, we're not charging you per month or per week or anything like that, and so that probably should save you a fair amount of money if you're willing to get into the recycling section.
Yeah, and willing to purchase the bags, and that's where the totes are convenient, because you're not running to the store because you ran out of bags. So, that's what we need a committee for, to, you know-
To research it.
To research all that.
And how many members on this committee, which is fair?
We talked about that.
The makeup's important.
Previous selectwoman, Mrs. Roy, had suggested, I believe, a five-
Five.
A finance committee member, the town council-
The town council, and the recycling coordinator.
And two unknown.
Talking about, I don't know-
Citizens in the West.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, you need some citizenry at large.
Well, if you're going to do, if you're, yeah, if you're going to go five, that, you count at one person from the civilian population, if you went to seven, you've got three people, I think maybe part of it depends on how many people would be volunteering, you could be, since it's an ad hoc, it's within the board's selectmen's jurisdiction, it's like, okay, we've got lots of volunteers, let's go seven, or if we don't have volunteers, we'll go five.
Need three hundred and fifty-one, one to go to each town.
It sounds like we've got four already, if we can get somebody from the finance committee interested. Steve's doing it reluctantly, I can see the look on his face. One more committee, are you kidding me?
Play your father, he was willing to accept the job back then.
Volunteer, volunteer.
And then we need a person at large, so we would need someone to volunteer as well.
Somebody else that tries to town, huh?
So, I know that finance is leading for a while, but we can get a note up to them to stop thinking about it, so if they're next meeting, they could-
Can we formally tonight establish the committee, reestablish the committee and go from there?
Yeah, we can, we can establish- Yeah, do it right now, and we'll start asking for members, and we'll be back on the thirteenth, in the meantime, as Sandy pointed out, we can get a note to the finance committee and specifically say, is anybody from the finance committee willing to serve?
I would move it-
Should we set it in the amount now?
Well, no, I don't think so.
Okay.
I think you can sit, you-
Wait and see what we get for response.
If we get, you know, we get several people interested in going seven.
I move it.
A second.
And we're moving that we establish recycling, recycling and solid waste committee again.
Yeah, because we're really looking at both aspects of this, not just recycling.
Todd, what, I mean, what information is available from the state to help this committee out at this point, I mean, you or anything else in the system?
All in favor.
Because, well, because I don't know whether other communities are facing the same situation, if they organize themselves to research what their options are, and what do they, you Have they organized themselves to research what their options are and what do they, you know. So we don't reinvent, go back and look at, say, let's gather all this information. Whereas the city or the town of X has already done all this work already.
So that's, that's a really good question, a good point. And I want to say out of my thirty-one meetings, just for me personally, there's a bunch of us across the state. I'd say almost every municipality, with the exception of some of the watched hands towns, Carver, Plumpton, Dale, everyone's got a recycling committee, everyone. Whether they call it another name, but they all have some sort of a perceived recycling committee. And that committee is highly active and kind of the direction they want to put the town in. So your neighbor, Kingston over here, has a great committee, highly active. I go to their meetings. You know, they ask me a lot of advice on that, and I enjoy going to those ones a lot. I think it's a really active committee. You know, they're, and they're kind of copying stuff here because I always point to here too, like the rain barrels, which I thought was fantastic, all the rain barrels that were sold. I'm like, get in touch with them, you know, talk to the Halifax beautification. And so I put the, I put Gene over there in contact with the beautification committee, and they're, they're, they're working hand in hand on a lot of really neat things. But that's a really good one. It's close. I would suggest attending one of their. East Bridgewater.
It went to totes.
We're talking about committee.
Oh, okay.
It's a ketchup toast.
I thought that was a, I thought the tote was the purse that you carried.
Well, mine can be bigger now sometimes.
That's fine. But I, there's plenty of resources that I have for, you know, whoever is gonna be on the committee, the board room, and more than that would help, so.
Thank you. I appreciate that. So, so you're gonna be chairing the committee?
I can't, I can't chair. I can show up, but I can't chair.
Okay, anything further?
He's talking about snow, not me.
Charlie, anything further?
I'm good. I do have, Steve's here, and so I can talk about Green Seal and Complete Streets in a minute.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
And thank you for your efforts, Sandy.
And we expect great things from you, Sandy, so.
Um, Steve has sent a contract for the, having Green Seal Environmental, which is the engineering firm he uses for a number of the highway projects. To help put together a complete streets policy. This is something that the state is pushing in terms of highway work. The cost would be six thousand, though they left themselves a little bit of wiggle room in terms of other expenses.
They didn't give an answer back yet.
So what we'd like the board to do tonight, I mean, I, we have copies of the contract. I could have them sign it, and we'll just, I mean, obviously. To some extent, anything that they ask for above the six thousand, we'll have to approve. But if you can get some more definition, I'm placing, you might want to say to them, any, you know. You mentioned a few other items that are above and beyond the six thousand.
Yeah, that's why I sent her today.
Yeah, and so anything above X, you're gonna need to stop, and we need to discuss this again. Because you don't have an infinite amount of resources.
They know we don't anyway, so they're not gonna.
Well, that, one of the main things that I get inquiries about, I won't say complaints, but is, is of course the roads. Everybody talks about the roads, like, um, the state's giving you all this money, what are you doing with it?
Well, that's the thing, well, this, this gets us into a program. We can get four hundred thousand, up to four thousand dollars. But you have to be in this program to get that money.
Up to four thousand or four?
Four hundred thousand. So did I say four thousand?
Yeah.
Four hundred thousand.
That's what I'm saying. We're paying six thousand dollars for a program. We're paying six thousand dollars for a program, they're gonna get, we're gonna afford, I'm gonna.
No, it's four hundred thousand.
Oh, okay.
But like I said, you have to be in this program to get.
And you get, and to be in the program, you have to have someone work on developing the program for your town.
Does the board have any questions? Standing man only?
Yeah, I'm sorry, thanks. Well, if the board, somebody would move for, for it to approve the contract with Green Seal for him to work out the Complete Streets program for Halifax.
I would move it, just a second. Tom, you kind of applied there.
No, no, I'm all good. I'm just reading ahead here.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and there are two copies here, um, in both, let's see, there's only one signature needed, so if.
I move, we have the chairman.
Second.
And the board already approved the T.L. Edwards.
Okay.
So all those in favor, aye.
What do I sign?
Here, you're the client by.
You personally guarantee this amount of.
Is there anything else that you get to talk to the board?
Well, I saw that you had, on your discussion site, about Fragged Roads.
We talked about the scub on Water Street.
Right, there was something about, I think it was Paradise.
We haven't had that.
We're gonna talk about Paradise Lane on the thirteenth. Mr. DeBro is coming in. He's continuing to contend that the town accepted Paradise Lane extension back when it accepted it Paradise Lane. So he has an appointment to see the selectman next, three weeks from now, seven forty-five.
All right, 'cause I, I wanted to ask questions about the Fragged Roads myself, because I've been getting complaints on Crystal Lake and a couple of other dirt roads.
Paper roads, the paper streets.
Unaccepted dirt roads. I mean, I've spent quite a bit of money putting stuff out there to try to keep them smooth. Now we don't have a grader. So I have somebody come in twice a year, and we try to fix it with the loaders as best we can, but.
Yeah, it doesn't.
It doesn't work.
The town doesn't have an obligation to, we are permitted to, because this town voted to accept the bylaws that allow us to plow and make minor repairs to unaccepted streets.
Yeah, I found a bylaw two times a year.
Right, so we're not obligated to, you know, we have to spend a certain amount of money, or we have to meet a certain standard or anything like that. It's basically what the resources of the town are available to us.
Right, I'm just, what is my option to do? Because I'm getting calls, these taxpayers are calling, giving me a hard time. They, you know, they give Karen a hard time, and she answers the phone. They used to be pretty nice, but now they're at the point, and I understand the frustration. I'm frustrated too. I can't.
Well, I mean, it's, you know, the law allows us to make minor repairs, that's it. If we wanted to go whole hog and accept the streets, we could go through that process. Mind you, as you would, you know better than anybody else, okay, great, you're now in line with every single other street in town, which we've already paved and is falling apart. You know, if we wanted to pick on South Street or on Wood Street or River Street, we won't pick on Hayward because of the people. But, you know, all the other streets in town, it doesn't mean simply because we've accepted a road that suddenly, especially the dirt roads, suddenly you're going to get your road paved and everything else. Um, I mean, as you mentioned, even the Complete Streets, that's four hundred thousand, that might get you a mile, a little more than a mile of paved road.
Right, that one today, it went up to three hundred and nineteen, if they were.
Yeah, what?
That's for one mile.
What, where is that?
From the boat ramp to the Hanson.
The part we didn't do the last time.
Right, that's the only part of fifty-eight that hasn't been touched.
Right, so what we, when Steve went out to bid in the board, we got those two bids from T.L. Edwards and from Averget, that was for this work. And that, and that is a road that at least is in decent, relatively speaking, condition. It's not like River Street, let's say. Where if you're gonna pave River Street, you need to tear the whole thing apart, put in, make sure your base is back to level. Forget about, you're not even doing drainage or anything.
It's not even a base on the road.
Yeah, it's all oil pan, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so even four hundred thousand doesn't get you very far. And then if we're adding more streets to the list that people now are demanding, well, I want it paved, I want stormwater, we're not getting there anytime soon.
Right.
I'm not saying that they shouldn't want those things. I'm simply saying that accepting the roads doesn't solve their problem. And, you know.
And it's not just that, just these paper roads, some of the houses are on the actual road.
Crystal Lake, you've got the extra problem that that, that path isn't really the road.
Right, yeah, there, there's the right-of-way by law, and there's, that is laid out, and there's the de jour, in the sense of the actual use of the road. And we have that even on the avenues.
Right, and some of those, the steps are on the road.
Right.
So.
Up on Chestnut there.
On your house.
So the road isn't where it is on Chestnut.
The challenges with the private roads that are sometimes more paper streets and private roads are the legal stuff in a sense of, we would then spend money surveying. We would then have to relay those roads out, and we would tell people, sorry, oh, that thing that's there that you think is yours, sorry, it's on the town, on the right-of-way. Get it out of there, which would be somewhat upsetting to.
It'd be worse than the tree issue.
Yeah. I mean, none of these are, yeah, sure, with enough money, yes, you can solve these problems. But that is a very, 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 very large amount of money. Because, you know, talking about the private roads and paper streets, you're basically starting from scratch. And, you know, they were established a hundred years ago, more than that now. And in many cases, you know, we never accepted them. And to accept them, sure, we take on the responsibility, but we're not gonna be doing anything. Well, also to accept them, here's, we're just talking about the ownership. That means we have to survey before we accept them, because we need to know what we're accepting. That means we're going to, probably, one way or the other, involve legalities about takings. Because even if we're going back to the original road layouts, the people have gotten into, we never owned it. So we, it's not a situation that, um, somebody can't take town property by adverse possession. However, those were never town roads to begin with. And if they were never town roads to begin with, those people have taken, on a practical basis, those sections of the roads by adverse possession, which means they own them. Which means then we go into takings, which means now we're gonna pay money to.
And they don't, whether or not they meet the bylaw standards.
Well, they never.
It changes that, the whole thing.
These streets that we're talking about.
Right.
Why you keep calling them streets?
Ways.
These paths.
So, no, none of this is easily solvable. Again, with enough money, that is. But unless the town was willing to substantially invest every single year for a number of decades in the roadwork.
You'd have to bond out for a long time to get that stuff done.
But one of my biggest questions is, so each time I get a call from one of these private roads or whatever you wanna call, unaccepted roads.
Yeah, are you looking for improvement?
It says, right, I'm supposed to get the permission from you guys also, or are you giving me permission to fix what I know needs to be fixed? I don't know what about that. Do I have to get permission from you guys every time?
We've operated, we've operated, basically, once the bylaws in place, it's within your jurisdiction to make a judgment about that. At least, I mean, the last couple of decades, that's what the board's operating.
My judgment?
Yeah.
And if it's something major, then I'll.
Yeah, and if it's major, in fact, we can't, we have to say no.
Right.
That's where the problem becomes, because, I mean, there's no, I'd have to go and see whether there's any case law or anything about what minor means and minor repairs. But there's a limitation in one way or the other that prevents the town from making improvements for, on private or unaccepted streets. Because they're not ours, in a sense, the tax, you know.
Your, the taxpayers are paying for private work, yeah.
That's, how do I answer some of these people? Because some of the people on those roads won't let us get in there. Now we can't.
Can't plow, you can't.
Now all the water won't leave the road because they won't let us grade in that area.
You know, that becomes, in my opinion, it becomes a civil problem.
For those people.
For those people, yeah, not us.
Yeah, in a sense of if there are residents there who, let's say, everybody has a right to traverse that road or that right-of-way.
You can't block it.
Right, you can't block it, but at the same time, they're saying, I will not let you do what, I will prevent you from doing what other people want done on that road. Well, then we just simply say, we're sorry, you folks work it out, and if you never work it out, we're sorry. But short of us accepting the street or taking it, more than even accepting, just, Miami-Dominguez taking the street and saying, we're doing what we need to do.
Well, that's, I was thinking of doing a letter to the, all these roads, just to learn more of how it's supposed to work, instead of trying to guess.
Yeah, we could work, we could bring.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Get the word out there, because half the people don't understand that when I explain to them that we are supposed to only do it twice a year. And they say, what? You guys, and I, when I first got in, I did as much as I could, trying to keep it smooth, because it made our job easier in the long run.
Do you plow up there?
Yeah.
And I could talk with Larry.
We do it every road, even if they're not accepted, just for the safety.
Right, yeah. And we pass, what was funny was, we didn't realize this, there was a separate bylaw that dealt with plowing roads.
Prowling those roads.
Yeah, Middleborough won't even, if it's unaccepted, they will not.
And that's where we found that out. This was about five or eight years ago. We read the articles about Middleborough. And so, oh, because we never accepted that statute, but we have been doing it all along, you know.
Because you also accept liability when you do.
Right, so, um, we had a town meeting that did approve the statute that we needed to accept. They, you know, so now we're legal.
To plow.
To plow, right, yeah. We had to go through that. I didn't, you know, when, I didn't realize until the whole issue came up in Middleborough that that was the case. I assumed once we, you know, the repairs included us plowing, but it didn't.
I never heard of paper street until I came to Halifax.
Yeah, we actually lost one of our plows over on Pasture Lane. Have you heard anything else on that? They were supposed to be paid in that Pasture Lane.
Yeah, right, yeah. I'll have to check, I have to, Terry's on vacation. I can check and see if there's any problems.
America lost a plot, I mean, it sticks, the Manhole Coats is sticking up that much.
Still?
No way.
And we put ramps on it, trying to keep it, so that wouldn't happen.
Yeah, but they'll.
Because it's, it's one of those streets where the planning board said, fine, we'll set aside this plot.
We'll hold a lot, except the lots are not a buildup of a lot, yeah.
Um, let me, let me look at the laws and a couple of things, and bring you in, Larry. Maybe we work out a form letter or a form pamphlet or something that you can give to people. May may not satisfy them, but at least we'll provide information.
I know I'm gonna get killed on it, but it, I can't keep on, like I said.
Right, your priority are the roads that are being accepted by the town.
Yeah.
I think you're right, though. I think notifying them, not gonna make them happy, but at least you've made an effort to let them know what's going on.
Yeah, can I ask, we talked to one of the guys the other day, because he gave Karen a hard time, and I tried to explain to him. He listened, but.
He didn't hear what he wanted to hear, yeah, yeah.
You know?
I pay taxes, my, well, yeah, you know, over the years, I, I know I've had discussions with people, said, listen, the time to do your research is prior to purchasing the house. And, and, you know.
I understand that for some people.
I know, they don't get it, and they don't wanna get it because it's a financial burden and it's frustrating to them. I, it's all understandable.
And in some ways, you know, it's understandable, you know, you live on the road, when you bought it, it wasn't explained to you about the buyer, the seller, what was going on. And now all of a sudden, you, you went to go drive your wife someplace, and the car broke down because of the rut in the road. But it's not accepted. That's the bylaw, that's what it is.
Yeah, it's hard trying to tell somebody that, though.
No, all right, all right. Okay, I'll, I'll stay in touch with you on this.
Thanks, Steve.
Thanks, Steve.
All right, thank you. Have a good night.
We have an eight forty-five trailer.
Should be thirty seconds. Could the board approve the trailer that's across the street for, that's being used as a school office trailer until August twenty-eighth? So, so moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Um, other stuff, we've got, um, ambulance, this was a, um, so what happens is that Jason uses the Houston-Govston area council's, um, group bid. And one of the things that they go out to bid for are ambulances, so we got a quote by that for specialty vehicles for two hundred eighty-seven thousand, five hundred eighty-one. This includes the trade-in allowance of the twenty-twelve Navistar-Terristar Wardening ambulance, which was, I guess, only worth five thousand dollars according to this. So, you know, he went through the contract, got bids. He did say to me that if they had gone through the state bid, I think it was, was it five thousand, seven thousand more? Sandy, or somebody, it was, it was a materially amount more to go through the state bid. So he got a better quote going through this outfit. And in fact, I believe the last time, one of the last times that the fire department went out to bid either for an ambulance or a similar vehicle, they used this consortium. And it's all legal. I've gone through the IG's handbook on this, as long as the bidding meets certain criteria, and they went out to bid, they had a newspaper ad and everything else that they were supposed to do. This qualifies, even though the actual group is headquartered in Texas instead of Massachusetts.
Can I ask a stupid question? Where does the ambulance come from? Somebody drive it up from there, or?
No, um, they're gonna bring it to Plainville.
Where it gets outfitted with.
Referenced everything on it.
Yeah. So any cost and everything else for transporting, for instance, is a freight delivery destination charge of three thousand dollars that's included.
Go ahead.
Never ceases to amaze me how expensive this stuff is.
So if the board would move, second.
I'll, I'll move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Uh, update on Rufus, um, back two Fridays ago. Rufus's owner said, hey, judge, I can't get there. I don't have a car. And the judge said, okay, fine, who's on vacation when? And the judge then said, fine, September sixth, nine o'clock, continuance to there. But in capital letters, further orders of the court, no further continuages. So hopefully, we will have a verdict on Rufus the dog. So hopefully, we will have a verdict on Rufus the dog come September sixth.
Meanwhile, he's still on the property?
I believe so, and still...
My understanding from the dog officer, I mean, animal control officer, is that he's no longer living in, uh, living in that apartment.
I don't know.
Because she said...
The person or the dog? No.
Or both.
Don't let me go there.
No, I don't know, well, I have no other information.
My understanding is that the individual is not living there anymore, and the foster dog is off the property, but that's a, that's a guess.
So what, I guess, what was the order on Rufus, because that was before me?
The board put him, said he was to be euthanized.
Yeah, speak of the devil, it will appear.
Um, we don't have, the, um, under the state law...
One moment, though.
Under the state law, the town doesn't have the right to ban a dog. The statutes for dogs, um, on the state level were changed several years ago, which eliminated that as an option. So the board can place stipulations, regulations, whatever, you know, it has to be leashed any time, even on the property, you know, et cetera, et cetera, whatever the board wants to. And it can have the dog ordered euthanized. Um, and, you know, obviously, it's a rare occurrence. If the dog leaves town, you know, let's say the board has the order for, but we go and the dog isn't there. Okay, as long as the dog never comes back to Halifax, that's fine by us, we're not going to, we don't know where the dog went.
We can't follow the dog, we can't prosecute him, we can't go in front of him.
That went to Hampshire?
Yeah, right.
Yeah, once, once it's out of our jurisdiction, we have no authority to say, go over to Hanson and say, "We put their dog to death, and we're going to go on your property and take it, if it happened."
Um, okay, we had a request for abatement, recycling bill four ninety-five. Several years ago, the owner had notified the town it was using a private hauler. This was back, I believe, in two thousand nine, because what I have is a list of bills here, and the remaining amount for two thousand nine was five dollars. So that bill was either paid or abated, my guess is it was abated. However, the owner states that he did not know, he needed to notify the town each year. And also, then, another family member had said to this owner that the matter had been dealt with each year when it was not. The owner would like a number of bills, basically, it's a weird collection, I didn't put them in right order, but it looks like from two thousand thirteen onwards, along with two thousand ten, and then a five dollar charge for two thousand nine. Um, I guess there was just some family issues regarding the owner's, owner's family and some disputes as who's was supposed to be, um, taking care of what. And what the owner, in essence, is now saying is, "Look, it's all dropped in my lap, even though I wasn't being the person responsible for having to pay all these bills, and I was being told that they were being paid." Um, so the owner is asking for, basically, because of the financial burden, and we're talking several hundred dollars at this point, that he be relieved of the matter. I have the letter here, where we, when we do recycling abatements, what we mention is just the bill numbers. Technically, it's a public record, all these recycling, somebody wanted to go in, um, and, but the board has had a precedent in the past of not discussing the people involved, even though if somebody wanted to go to the collector's office, they could get that record pulled. So here's the letter, anybody wanted to take a look at it.
Is this person the actual property owner?
Yes.
So it's ultimately his responsibility?
Ultimately, it's his responsibility, but I think, I think, I think, no. I think what, there was a divorce involved, and I think he's claiming the other party was, um, saying to him that the bills were either being paid or being abated. Neither of those ever happened, the divorce occurred, he's stuck now with all the liabilities, including this.
When did we, when did we abate this?
Well, normally, you would abate the, you know, right now, we don't have any current bills, so, you know, the abatement cycle is usually...
It's a couple of different things.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, well, how long ago did we abate this?
Well, there was original, there was probably an original...
Two thousand thirteen had to be the original.
There was an original abatement back in two thousand nine.
So it's a rest on program.
Right, and then subsequent years, it looks like a few of the bills were paid because he's not asking for all the years, but for most of the years, I think, starting in two thousand thirteen. So I think seven years plus two thousand ten, so eight years' worth of bills.
Mr. Flores, desire...
Well, this is tough, because we haven't been too accommodating with the abatements.
I told the individual, "Look, I would make the request, because if he doesn't, he's never going to get a yes," but I wasn't promising him anything.
I mean, ultimately, the property gets weaned, correct?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, we could grant a, you know, if he's got a private hauler, we, we've already stopped that part of it, right?
I don't know what he has on, but we have to really research.
He's not currently getting built.
Well, he, they'll be, he's been getting a bill every year, including this past year, I mean, the...
If the house is being occupied, then, you know...
Yeah, but if he's now has a private hauler...
Well, that's what he's claiming, that all this time he had a private...
Yeah, but, but we never gave him an abatement for that.
Except for two thousand nine.
Except for two thousand nine.
And he didn't realize that he's supposed to notify us each year as to whether or not he's still...
Because he's saying, another member of the family was saying, "That's what I'm doing," and never did it.
I understand. This is tough, because we have not been giving, you know, after the fact.
I don't want to make a decision on it, but I, my, my first inclination is to deny it, but...
I, 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 I tend to agree with you.
Is, has the, has the board abated if they've been given proof?
No, in two thousand nine, if it's the first one, if you, you, when we first started this program, you provided us with certificates from the haulers saying that, in fact, they were doing, picking up your trash, and they were recycling. Then we would abate the individual, although they could show that how long...
For that year.
For the year, but you have to each year ask for...
Because the homeowner might change, the hauler might change, the hauler, they may decide to go to the town program or vice versa, or whatever. So what happened three or four years ago is that the board, the board had never placed a deadline on the abatement process, and then three or four years ago, they said, "Look, we're getting people asking for abatements from two thousand nine, it's now twenty fifteen." Hello, folks, you know, you should have been asking. So the board gave public notice, "Hey, in thirty days, we're closing the door on everything before now." And now, what it does is each fall, it's late summer or early fall, we'll get the bills out within another ten days or so. They'll be announced, saying, "Okay, bills are due such and such a date, you want to apply for an abatement for fiscal twenty, file for it by this date." You need to provide a letter from the hauler, saying that you're participating in their recycling program. The haulers these days, they got a form letter all set up, they just have to put in, fill in the blank for Joe or Jane, and off we go. And we had about a hundred of them, I believe, um, last September, one way or the other, so... For the people who are participating, it's pretty routine.
And then what got, to be difficult was, you know, someone said, "Well, you know, I only missed it by fifteen days, or, you know, three days," and then, "Well, you know, he missed it by three, I, I missed it by five, was another couple of days," and then it just kept crawling out.
It kept escalating, so we made the decision, it's been thirty days, if it didn't come in before that thirty days, it wouldn't even be discussed.
I understand there's some extenuating circumstances, but everybody's got extenuating circumstances, it gets difficult. We could wait till the next meeting to make a decision, give you a chance to catch up on some of that stuff.
Yeah, so if the board, so we'll just table this until the thirteenth and bring it back to the board. Um, one more thing before we do the dog hearing, just on Mr. Harrison and his truck next to three ninety-five.
Oh, God, thanks.
We've not received a registration, I sent that by certified mail, asking for a copy of it. Um, I told him that we'd impose the daily fines starting tomorrow. Um, I got no response, so unless the board says otherwise, we'll start the daily fine process tomorrow.
We've been more than generous.
Oh, God, yes.
I, I'm done.
So...
I would, I would move to just start the process of the fines.
Yeah, I was, I was just gonna, on our bylaws, it says not more than one unregistered vehicle that has been inoperable.
Right, but it also has to be, um, behind, and the fence isn't there, and it's not registered, it's right now that we know of, we, we...
And he's made no effort at this point in time, that I'm aware of, to rectify the situation where the pit was blown down.
And that was way back when.
That was during the winter months, and we've contacted him on several occasions, you know, to try to rectify this, and he's not cooperating.
And the board did give him a permit for the unregistered vehicle, it allowed it to be there. Um, that permit has expired many months ago.
Extension too, then we don't have another.
Yeah, we made a provision, he put some fencing up around it to help the neighbors not having to look at it, which is the whole intent of the bylaw, anyway. So that you're not forced to look at stuff that's essentially junk. Uh, he claims he's going to restore it, or whatever.
Well, he, he wrote to the board and said he had registered the vehicle. We've asked several times for a copy of the registration, he's declined to do so.
Start the process.
I, I'll, I'll move that, if we need a motion to start the process.
Yeah, it would be helpful.
Stay a second.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye. I think you got a nine o'clock.
Ooh, ooh.
Okay. So if you could give PM a minute to catch up on the minutes, then anybody who is going to be testifying in this hearing, please stand, give PM your name, and then PM will swear everybody in.
We all stand. Okay, we're in. Okay. Get it? I'm Nancy Shane. Nancy Shane. And your address? Thirty-five Nature Way, Circle, Halifax. Okay.
Paula Spaziani. Sixth Nature Way.
Florio, twenty-five Nature Way.
Okay, is that it? Okay, so then we can raise their right hand. Do you swing an extra during the seat for something?
I have to, yes.
Great, thanks, everybody have a seat. Um, generally, what the board does is they'll start with the animal control officer, or report, and go from there.
Okay, on six thirty, twenty nineteen, at approximately twelve twenty-two, uh, the dispatch was, uh, had reported a pit bull that had bit her dog. Um, she, she owned a Shih Tzu, and she was walking her dog by twenty-five Nature Way when a pit bull got loose, came out and allegedly bit her dog. The gentleman, McIntyre, responded, there was no visible wounds. Um, she, uh, the dog owner, the Shih Tzu, Paula, was informed by me to have the dog, um, taken to the vet, just in case we couldn't see the wounds, where they would have to, um, the directory report said that we, we had no punctures, there were no scratches, so there was, therefore, no exposure.
So that's why the dog wasn't quarantined or anything?
Exactly.
Was the dog in question leashed, or was it...
It, the dog being walked, the Shih Tzu was leashed at the time.
Yeah, I, I saw it.
Right, uh, the, the other dog, the pit bull, was leashed in the backyard, but slipped its leash. The owner immediately came after to, to restrain his dog.
Has there been any other incidents with this particular dog?
No, there hasn't.
In the neighborhood, and there's changed, no reports, or anything?
And the Shih Tzu is effectively okay, is that what I'm getting?
She is now, um, she wasn't, she was taken to the vet. She couldn't, she was having trouble in her left hind leg, she was limping, and she was lame. When I took her to the vet, she had to be sedated, um, in order to examine, um, which they found no, you know, no visible wounds, but they said it was probably a muscle called from the dog having it slayed in its mouth. Um, so they sent her home on medication. She wouldn't even leave the house for three days.
Yeah, yeah.
Not even to go walk in the yard, she wouldn't. Um, now I have her leaving the house, we just don't walk in that direction anymore.
So as far as anyone knows?
So she is better.
The pit bull has not been loose before, as far as we know?
As far as we know, he's relatively new to the neighborhood, anyway, so there's no big history with this dog to begin with.
It's been here for at least a year, so we would, if, it was an issue, we would have reported.
Yeah.
A long time ago.
Has the restraining system, or the yard, or fencing, or what, I don't know where the dog has been kept?
It was just slipping of the leash.
While he was walking?
The fence, but not the fence.
Okay, all right, I, I misunderstood, okay.
They don't allow people to build fences, so the dog cannot be properly contained.
So it was while the dog was on a leash, the dog escaped the leash?
Right, and I witnessed the, right after the fact. Paula came up to me after the incident, I had just gotten home, a little few doors down from this gentleman on the same side of the street, and to say that the dog and Paula were shell-shocked would be an understatement, and she was shaking, the dog looked very distraught, and I comforted her. She felt that the owner really didn't give her her due, as far as the fact that she was very dramatically upset. Um, you know, I've lived in the park for eight years. Um, I work up at WATD, and I've been a reporter, sort of a pretty good witness. And, um, when I moved to the park, it, what, I came to kind of downsize, because I've had some serious health issues, and I just wanted to downsize my life. And the nice thing about the park is it was, it's quiet, people have dogs, I've had dogs all my life, my kids and I have had a Jack Russell for eighteen years. People would walk their dogs, older ladies, you know, groups of dogs, little poodles, whatever, they have a specific law in the park, the dogs had to be under thirty pounds, which, when you're in more of a retirement community, that makes perfect sense. There was a woman the other day that was walking her dog, she had the air thing around her.
Excuse me, excuse me, no, this has nothing to do with this particular...
No, no, what I'm saying, I'm thinking, what would happen? And she, she had a little dog, and she's on air. Um, the, the, the point is, that most homeowners don't cover the pit bulls, and insurance companies are not stupid, they do their research, their profits, and there's a certain reason why there's a lot of issues with homeowners' insurance with pit bulls, because they're very bred to, um, be aggressive at times.
Has, has park management been involved in any of this?
The state came in a, a few years ago, before Stacy sold the park, and said that it was discriminatory, basically, to the dogs, that any size dog could probably come into the park. And so, um, a lot of the residents were upset, because we have a certain enjoyment there that you don't want to worry about a Rhodesian Riddback, or a Rottweiler, or, you know, the big dogs. It's a quiet little community of people that are slowly going into retirement or are retired and have a lot of physical ailments, so, you know, nobody's against dogs.
I can appreciate, I can appreciate that. What is your ex, what is your expectations of Mrs. Spaziano?
Well, at, at the very least, I would like the vet bill of two hundred dollars paid, because I would not have taken her to the vet that day if this dog had not come at the two of us and had my dog's leg in his mouth.
Was Mr. Florio notified about this, maybe? You want to explain to your side of the story, Mr.?
Well, I was out on my deck, on my ramp, uh, with my, fixing a grill, and I had the dog on a slip leash, and we were out there for a while. Then I noticed that she was off the leash, so we were still on the ramp. My wife's standing at the ramp, it's about thirty-five feet long. And I noticed she was about five feet away from me, and I started to approach her with the leash, to put her, put her back on. She started to back away a little bit, and then we got to my driveway, and she was still kind of backing away, and then she noticed the lady with her dog walking, and she ran across the street. I was right behind her, she was probably thirty feet away. Um, and by the time I got across the street, she had already picked up her dog. I leased my dog, and I asked if the dog was okay, and then I left.
Your dog had all the shots up and baiting and everything?
Yes, the dog on... Yes, the dog, um, so...
Both, both dogs were not licensed. They had every shots. But during the time of the incidents, both parties were not, did not have half-bast license. They have since gotten a license, so they're good to go now.
It was June thirtieth and that was the last day. And unfortunately, I have commitments during the day. So I wasn't able to get up here until the next week. And I knew I was coming up the next week. I've lived in Halifax six years and had the dog licensed every single year. If I was three days late, then sue me.
Well, nobody's talking about doing that. We're just looking to see.
We're just, we're just saying.
Yeah, yeah.
That, that's all.
I, I think to me, an issue is the dog can't be properly contained because of the way the park is, is set up. So there is no fencing in. The dog will always be on a slip leash or, or closing, breaking through.
Excuse me.
I don't use a slip leash.
Hold, 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 hold for a second.
I have a, a halter for the, uh...
I asked a question to Ms. Florio. If you could have a seat, please.
Say again?
If you have a seat, would you, I ask you what your expectations were.
And I, I said I would like for my, him to at least pay the vet bill of two hundred dollars.
The initial, initially she wanted the dog removed from the mobile home.
Yeah, well...
But I explained to her that the, the, the board could not order that. It used to be where they could order it, but now that no longer applies as far as moving into another town.
Typically, uh, the, uh, association or the management has a policy in terms of if there's an incident. I don't know what's in place over there or what isn't in place, but...
Nothing.
Uh, it's certainly not anything, you know, we could do. If there was physical damage to the dog or if the dog had been, or you had been bit or whatever.
So I would have been better off to let the dog bite me.
I'm just saying that we have more recourse, that's all.
The, the, the issue that I have is that, Mr. Florio, how long have you been in the park?
Since May of last year.
So it's been over a year.
And you walk your dog in the yard all the time?
Have I ever lost the dog in here? No.
You walk?
Do you walk your dog in the yard?
I walk the dog, uh, well, since I've been on medical, I've been watching twice a week, twice a day. And I have a dog walker that does it twice a week.
And there's been no incidents other than this one? I, I think it's, it's a fair asking that you pay the medical bill, but that's just my opinion. As far as the dog being released from there, there's been no track record that the dog has been vicious or done anything, any changes. And, and I'm, I'm not, I'm not inside the dog's mind, so I don't know what his intent was. But I take it if it's what did you say it is, the pit bull, if he was vicious, somebody would have, that you, no matter if you had the dog in your arms, it would have been out of your arm. And, and believe me, I've dealt with dogs my whole life. Used to breed shepherds. So, I, 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 I'm just giving you my opinion. There, there's three, three members to this board.
It doesn't make me feel very safe in what I'm saying.
And it doesn't make me feel safe being a couple of doors down and...
I can't even walk like I did before.
Well, let, let's, let's, let's be frank. E- e- everyone in this room has rights. And Mr. Florio has rights as well as he doesn't. He changes, if he adheres to the regs as far as keeping his dog leashed and on a leash, he changes following because this has only been one incident. And I realize it's traumatizing you and I'm not belittled in that. But we have no authority which say, "You gotta take your dog out of that park." Let's make that clear. And you said a state individual came down and said that that's being prejudiced towards an individual, say they can't have a certain type of dog. So that, that, to me, is a dead issue at this point.
Yeah.
You know, unless you take it up with, take it up with your committee or your, what's on the change.
May I ask a quick question? If you could ask Mr. Florio if the dog is covered under any homeowner, so that if the dog did happen to bite somebody, if the, you know, he isn't liable, but the town isn't liable or, or whatever. I mean, I'd like to know that the dog is covered under some sort of a policy.
That's something you'd have to take up with.
That's, that's, that's a civil matter, is what I'm saying.
So, I, it's just, you know, I'm so sorry.
What's your, what's your stance?
I would just ask the officer if she had anything else that she can't tonight.
Well, um, just that when I went, I mean, there were no apparent injuries. Apparently the Shih Tzu was in Paul's arms when I went into the home. Um, she didn't seem shaken up and as a dog owner myself, I'd be nervous too. I have a Yorkie. But I also have an old English bulldog with a kind of both spectrum, oh, both ends of the spectrum. Um, when I went to see the pit bull, she was very friendly with me. Um, both dogs were, they were great. Um, neither dog was something that I'd be concerned about with people. And Mr. Florio mentioned that he's never had any issues with his dog and other dogs in the past, that she's friendly and she seemed that way, so that's really all that I observed that day.
And I observed the same thing. Just add that both dogs were quite friendly and playful.
That may have been part of it, the, the dog got loose and wanted to play or, you know.
Yeah.
Just got a little rougher than anybody would like it.
Mm-hmm. The dog does like to jump, you know, the pit bull does like, what he likes to be.
I don't believe we have the authority to force anyone to pay any medical bills, I don't believe.
I'd have to check.
I mean, that could be something you seriously at least could explore yourselves at this point. Uh, we could do some research on our end. Uh, I, I don't see where we have much of an action other than to, uh, ask Mr. Florio. Is, have I got that right, Mr. Florio? Is that your, yeah, okay. To, to certainly be more careful about having the dog restrained. Uh, I mean, that's an obvious. I, I, if, if the dog had been physically injured or you had been physically injured and it was a vicious attack or something, you know, we have the option of maybe ordering a dog put down, but I don't see that this rises anywhere near that kind of an occasion. So I, I think it's just an unfortunate event, at least from my perspective. Um, then hopefully it'll, uh, never happen again.
Gordon? The, the only thing that I can say at this time is that we sent a, a note from the board of selectmen to Mr. Florio that he maintains the dog on the leash at all times, that he's outside the, his building. And that if, should there be another incident of this kind, we may take up more action than we are today.
You maintain licenses?
And maintain licenses.
Annually, why don't you?
Charlie?
I'm good. I'll check on the medical bills. I'll check.
That's about as much as we can do at this time. Thank you, thank you for your presentation.
Does the board want to take a short break or a few other things?
Yeah, yeah.
So if you can tell a friend, a five-minute break.
Okay, we're back. It's, it's...
So let me try and get through the other stuff here. Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Program. We were awarded a grant of fifteen thousand dollars to complete a community resilience planning process to deal with climate change. I'll be working on hiring a contractor during the next month and get that program up and running.
I was hoping for beachfront property on South Street.
Wait longer. Um, open space plan revised plan, um, I had submitted that a few weeks ago. There were deficiencies in the version that was submitted, sorry, in twenty seventeen. Has been approved. That makes the town eligible for future grants for this program. That's where we're getting the HOPS money. Um, town hall room allocations, I will, um, try and set up a meeting. I won't be here next week. I'll try and, the board wants to set up a meeting about that, um, for next week. I, sounds like I suspect the majority of the board...
Next week?
Yes. Is that, I mean, unless you want to do it in a couple of weeks.
Okay.
Well, I can either set up for next week or I can set up for two weeks.
No rush.
Wait, I mean, the, the only rush I had was if we were gonna do anything different with the cabling and that's a moot point.
Right.
So we can wait.
Okay, so, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Nothing at this time.
No, I, I, Gordon.
Is the cable going back into the data room itself?
Yeah.
The, I mean, I actually walked around. Town hall went down to the basement, looked at everything.
Oh, no, you went to the dungeon?
Yes, I did. Uh, I would just advocate that put Caesar robot where Cory is and call it a day.
You mean above where he is or do you mean in his room?
Over in the, uh...
Over above him, so on the second floor.
Yeah.
If they can work out some storage up there and there is no heat in there.
Or AC.
Or AC, yeah. I mean, we can just go there.
Well, what I'm gonna do, I, I'll, I'll set up a meeting anyway. And anybody who's interested, I'll set up for a week on back, actually, then, for some reason, okay. Um, that Walnut Street truck traffic, um, we, I know the chief was on, was scheduling a meeting. I haven't heard from him. I'll check back with him, um, as to a date for the Traffic Study Committee meet about Walnut Street, both on the truck traffic and the speed limits and such. Uh, visiting nurse association, um, we have a new contract with a new group, Visiting Nurse Association, K-COD. Um, what Peggy Salter had told me is that more of the nursing associations are dropping out of the sort of the local, clinic days and such where they, you know, don't check blood pressure and cholesterol and glucose, et cetera. Um, nevertheless, they, we have a contract with the Visiting Nurse Association, K-COD, for seven thousand dollars. That's what we have in the budget, so there are two copies. First, for the board to approve and then for all members to sign.
Is anybody keeping track of how many people actually use that?
Um, I know I'm not. I can check with Peggy.
Quite a few people.
Out of curiosity, I, I never see anybody.
I think they, there may be more people when, I think one of them is over at the council and agent.
Oh, yeah, that makes sense.
They may see more.
Trish is over there all the time.
The board, so it would move and someone's second and so, and then the board would vote to approve this.
I'll, I'll move it. One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, highway barn contract, this is for the door contract. The work's completed, but we need to have a contract for the records, so there are two copies for the board to approve and sign. So if someone would move, um, to approve the contract with E5 Builders LLC for the work that was done on the highway garage doors.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Done the revocation hearings.
Okay, where do we sign authorization?
Up here. Fifteen Ocean Avenue, um, either the, the same car is still there at this tax site location. I was someone else's, they can manage the situation. So I've sent a photograph, the car, the police chief, and I'll wait to hear back from him. Um, lastly, invasive weeds in East Monponce Pond. And we've gotten several complaints during the last few weeks. In fact, I was over at Mia's and the person who was working there mentioned, said, "Wait, are you Charlie Selig?" "Uh, yeah, you're the person I need to talk to."
That's when you always say, "No." Or sometimes I say, "It depends."
I'm still, I'm too much of a regular or recognizable there. Uh, it depends on whether you're giving me money or am I getting, giving you money. But, um, nevertheless, I do have a call in to Solitude. Um, we've haven't treated, these are the invasive plants, not the algae problem over in East Monponce Pond. And every few years, we need to treat the pond with a herbicide to get some dye off. And I guess the, um, probably, sort of, the growth happens exponentially and this is a year that it's noticeable to a lot of people. I don't know whether it's going to be doable or practical to do anything this year. I'm checking with Solitude.
It's kind of late anyway. You do something else, it's gonna grow back.
Right, so I'm gonna, but I'm working with them, so the board does recognize that there is a problem here that we do need to get the treatment done, but it may not occur this year. PM, do we have any street openings or entertainment permits?
But I do have, although I'm gonna need to go to the, uh, um, one day with a license for, um, uh, Alton Park Restaurant for, um, the event that he's doing at, um...
What's Alton Park? Field Song?
Field Song, yeah, that's... On the eighteenth, um, fire and police had no problems with it. Um, we didn't have a commitment here because we've done the last past three years and we've had no issues there, so I, I'm...
Well, I think we pass the word on to the board and if the board had wanted anybody to come in, we would have passed any commitment.
Yeah, um, so anyway, that, that's that. So I don't know if we're gonna be able to do that.
I'll move that. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And if the board does have anything else, an open session?
Open, sign, sign.
Open session, I do ask that the board go into executive session. Um, we need to discuss the patrol officer contract, the Highway Cemetery contract negotiations on both. Um, and then on a separate executive session to go in on the matter of Andrews versus the town of Halifax. Um, in the first case, having public discussion of the union negotiations would be detrimental to the town's position.
Because it wasn't.
Similarly, the discussion, a public discussion on the court case would be detrimental to the town's position. I know we have separate votes.
Can we take two separate votes on that?
Yeah.
So I would, I would move the first executive session for patrolman.
Second.
Gordon?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Troy, yes.
Okay, this is that, um...
Just, uh, before we go into executive session, on an upcoming meeting, can we discuss the council and agent building itself and the possibilities of...
We have, it's scheduled for the twenty-seventh of August. Um, I had, uh, topped with the board at one of the meetings, I think last month, and said, "When do you want to have," because we agreed that we needed to, we were talking about the regionalization possibilities and things like that. And I asked the board whether you wanted to do on the thirteenth, the twenty-seventh, the consensus was the twenty-seventh. So we have, we have set aside an hour from eight till nine on the twenty-seventh for that discussion.
Okay, thanks.
Um, so now what are we gonna do about the next one?
So Tom probably would move and...
Yeah, I'll move.
There's a second one, so we're gonna...
This is on the legal case.
Yep. Yes, we got Millie's, then we got Gav, and then, so, um, you two would say yes and yes, those two?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, and then...
Or cubes.
Okay, and so we will now be going, coming out of the open session to continue the meeting. We will have no announcements.
Open session, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so...
So that's it for our public session, so we can tell...